LRS Plumbing, helping out an elderly resident in South LA. Betty Epps was surviving winters without heating in her home, until Senior Lead Officer John Biondo discovered her plight and enlisted the help of LRS Plumbing.
I noticed when we went in the house, it was really, it was winter and it was really, really cold in the house, and so we had a conversation with her about why it was cold, and she let us know that the heater wasn't functioning.
LRS Plumbing took care of the heating problems for free, but the heater kept breaking down. So now the company has donated a brand-new heating and air-conditioning unit as part of its yearly Season of Giving campaign in the community.
We look for stories from the community or anywhere around that where people are in need.
But these guys are going the extra mile. They're putting in a new tankless water unit and taking out the old one. They're also adding a washer, a dryer, and a low-flow toilet. And boy, is Mrs. Epps surprised. What do you think it's gonna be like with your new heating system, your new washer, dryer, your new low-flow toilet?
They're gonna put a toilet in? I didn't know that.
But wait, there's more. Betty Epps' home is getting the star treatment. Everywhere you look, there's drilling, sawing, cleaning, and raking, even roof sweeping on a very precarious roof.
Very easy for us to have a problem that somebody calls us about, and we go out and we work on that for two or three months to solve it for them. So at that point, they become, you know, our friends, our family, that kind of stuff, yeah.
We just give back, and there's no greater feeling to continue to give back.
It's awesome. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it and how grateful I am.
A good deed by local plumbers and cops working together to help someone in need. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
For more information on LRS Plumbing and its Season of Giving program, contact lrsplumbing.com. The neighborhoods surrounding Fox Studios in LA's West Side is experiencing a revival in public art. Gil Reyes shows us from Century City.
If you've walked or driven through Century City lately, you may have noticed them. New public artwork popping up next to luxury hotels and skyscrapers.
It adds so much to the community. I mean, here we've got shopping centers, people living, office buildings, but then you have art, and all of a sudden you stop and say, "That is beautiful."
That is a piece entitled "Goddow" by artist Brett Price, part of a public art renaissance on LA's West Side called Century City Sculpture. The year-long exhibition will feature the works of ten nationally and internationally renowned artists. There will be nineteen artworks such as these on display, each one with the ability to inspire conversation among passerby's on the street. At least, that's the goal. Public art didn't really exist on Avenue of the Stars and surrounding streets until 2012. That's when the first Century City Sculpture event was launched, decorating Hyatt Regency Century Plaza, Fox Plaza, and other local landmarks with curious outdoor displays such as these. Installations usually stay for a year or so, only to be replaced by new ones, continuously inspiring new thought, new conversation.
This is not a largely city-driven effort. Our office helped, but this is really created by the Century City Chamber of Commerce and a number of individual businesses.
This year's program will feature a walking tour with maps.
It's a mile, it will take you an hour. That's fantastic. And then you go and eat in the restaurant, go to the movies.
Expanding your options as well as your horizons in Century City. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
You can check out these abstract works on Santa Monica Boulevard, Constellation Boulevard, and Avenue of the Stars in Century City. Councilman Mike Bonin recently hosted an open house on Venice Boulevard to discuss the mayor's great streets plan from Mar Vista, and it was a hands-on experience.
Photos of other public spaces, including this parklet with a swing or this bicycle parking corral, spark ideas and conversations. Folks even played around with their idea of how landscaping, traffic, and pedestrians should coexist on Venice Boulevard.
I generally feel safe on the bike lanes, but having them separated would be even nicer.
It would be nice if it was even more walkable, maybe wider sidewalks.
Across the street from the Mar Vista Farmers Market, Councilman Mike Bonin held an open house that asked residents, business owners, and those who work or visit the community to share ideas for improving Venice Boulevard, Mar Vista's main thoroughfare.
Mayor Garcetti and I are doing everything we can. We've been going door-to-door, holding these open houses to try to get as much community and neighborhood feedback on what people's dreams are here in Mar Vista for what a great street should be.
Venice Boulevard is just one of fifteen streets throughout the city. San Pedro's Gaffey Street and Reseda Boulevard in Northridge are among them that are getting overhauled as part of the mayor's Great Streets Initiative aimed at reimagining our streets to make them more attractive to residents, shoppers, and investors.
They'd like to see some outdoor dining, they'd like to see it safer for pedestrians, maybe some mid-block crosswalks, safer for cyclists.
The councilman says some improvements will happen right away, while other more permanent and labor-intensive changes will take more time to implement. But before any work is done, the city needs you to put pencil to paper and share your big dream for creating your idea of a great street.
Engineers are high in demand in Los Angeles, and city officials are hoping to attract more people to work in the field. And one way they're doing that is by showing the younger generation how much fun science and math can be. Yana Kay reports.
These LAUSD elementary students couldn't be more excited as their container with an egg inside landed without the egg breaking. It's all part of LA's Celebration of Engineers Week, which seeks to get more kids interested in the engineering field, and so far, it's paid off.
It's fun being an engineer.
Two-hundred-and-fifty students took part in an egg-drop contest at City Hall, hosted by Councilmember Gil Sadio, where they had to design a container that would protect an egg when dropped from high above. Some eggs didn't make it, but others did.
It made it survive by the ziploc bag and the cotton balls by the bottom.
Some of the eggs, they descended really, really slow because they utilized the parachute effect. Other egg containers, they utilized a strong structural base, so when it did hit the ground, it actually absorbed most of the force. So we had several different designs, but overall, all the students did great, and they had fantastic egg containers.
Engineers Week featured all sorts of activities citywide for elementary and college students, introducing them to engineering while promoting science, math, and technology.
We jokingly refer to it as Geek Week, because these are all the geeks of the classroom and of the families that they come from, and we want them to feel proud about that and pursue their goals.
Math and science is cool.
Meanwhile, the LADWP held its own structure-building workshop where college students competed in a boat-building contest. City officials say these kinds of community outreach events help engage engineering students who may one day work for the city and fill a growing need.
There's a lot of work to do, and it'll take sharp young minds like we have here today to be involved in getting those problems solved.
And by the looks of things, the future appears to be brighter than ever. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Officials also hope that more women become interested in and enter the engineering field. The city and its police officers reached contract agreement. The city attorney files suit against the company contracted to do building work for the LADWP, and the city designates a popular dining hub, Japan Town. These stories and more in City Beat.
The city and the Police Protective League have announced they've reached a tentative agreement on a four-year contract for Los Angeles police officers. Part of the agreement includes a no-cost living adjustment for the 2014 and 2015 fiscal years with increases starting in 2016 through 2018, the year this contract expires. The agreement also includes the equivalent of a 5% increase for health care subsidy and a substantial increase in cash overtime throughout the contract. In a joint statement, Mayor Garcetti, Council President Herb Wesson, and the Police Protective League called the contract "fair and responsible." The city council would still need to give final approval. City Attorney Mike Fuhrer has announced his office is filing a major lawsuit against PricewaterhouseCoopers, which was hired by the city to manage the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power's customer billing system. But Fuhrer says what ended up happening is the company botched the job it was hired to do when the billing system launched eighteen months ago and cost the city tens of millions of dollars in damages. LADWP general manager Marcy Edwards assures customers that they have corrected a majority of erroneous bills and continue to do so. Customers who still have questions or problems with their bills can call 1-800-DIALED-WP. Edwards says call wait times have also been reduced. LA has a little Tokyo, and now it's also got a Japan Town. Council members approved the renaming of Sawtelle in West LA with a fourteen-to-zero vote. The West Side neighborhood is home to many Japanese establishments, from banks to restaurants to flower shops. Prior to its official renaming, the area was also referred to as Little Osaka. The West LA Neighborhood Council says having an official designation will help West LA to become a more identifiable area like Brentwood and Mar Vista. The renaming of the area to Sawtelle Japan Town also helps bring awareness to the area's history when a large concentration of Japanese-Americans moved to the city's West Side due to race-based restrictions on buying homes from the early 1900s to the 1950s.
Rocker George Harrison is honored with a new tree planted in his memory in Griffith Park. And as Gil Reyes reports, it replaces the original plant, which died in a strange twist worthy of a Beatlesque ballad.
Griffith Park's councilman Tom Labange helps plant a new pine tree honoring former Beatle George Harrison. It replaces the original Harrison Memorial Tree destroyed by Beatles. Seriously, Beatles, as in the insects, infested and devoured the original Canary Island Pine Tree last year. Breakfast with the Beatles radio show host Chris Carter recalls the witty headlines that followed referencing Harrison's songs and career.
USA Today, "Isn't it a pity Beatles killed George Harrison Tree." CBS, "Beatle Invasion Kills George's Tree."
George Harrison's loved ones say he too would have appreciated the coincidence. The original tree was planted in 2002, soon after his death from lung cancer at the age of 58. At this year's replanting, steps from the Griffith Observatory were close friend Paula Greenfield, sister-in-law Linda Arias, and older sister Louise Harrison. She's written a book about George Harrison and the Beatles entitled "My Kid Brother's Band."
I have loved him all his life, and I loved him long before he was rich and famous. In fact, I loved him before he even had any teeth, and I know that he would be very, very happy to know that although the one tree didn't survive, that we are now trying again to put something here in his memory.
In Griffith Park, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The new tree was planted on what would have been George Harrison's 72nd birthday. In this week's List of Things to Do and Exhibit by Women About Women during National Women's History Month, Seek La Via Takes It to the Valley and an Exhibit on Jazz Pioneer Duke Ellington.
March marks National Women's History Month, and here in the city, the Pico House Gallery is hosting the exhibit called "From Her," an exhibition by women about women. The exhibit is open every Tuesday to Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. from now through Sunday, March 22nd. The artwork explores how women see themselves in relation to nature. The Pico House Gallery is located at the El Pueblo Historical Monument at 424 North Main Street. To see a sampling of some of the works on display, you can go to facebook.com/FromHerLA. The next car-free event, Seek La Via, is taking place in the valley for the first time. It happens on Sunday, March 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Participants will be able to travel between North Hollywood and Studio City on car-free streets using foot, pedal, and non-motorized wheel power. The event will run along Lancashire Boulevard between the North Hollywood Metro Red Line Stop at Chandler Boulevard and the Universal Studio Red Line Stop, and along Ventura Boulevard between Campo de Cahuanga and Coldwater Canyon. The 5.5-mile route will highlight some of the gems of the East Valley, including the North Hollywood Arts District, Universal City, Studio City Farmers Market, and the famed Sportsman's Lodge. Go to seeklaVia.org. The exhibition "Love You Madly: A Portrait of Duke Ellington" will display archival recordings, concert posters, and original photographs related to jazz pioneer and prolific master composer Duke Ellington's life and career. The art show opened earlier this month and will remain open through June 6th at the William Grant Still Art Center, located at 2520 Southwest View Street. Gallery hours are Tuesdays to Saturdays, noon to 5:00 p.m. The materials exhibited will chronicle Duke Ellington's rise to fame through swing in the Cotton Club and Big Band era as an inventive arranger and charismatic bandleader. Go to wgsac.wordpress.com for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
It's the start of a new season, and one Chinese festival reminds us of light and renewal. The Chinese-American Museum held a Lantern Festival that lit up a recent March afternoon for many fairgoers, and Anna Marcos takes us there.
You can always count on the Lion Dance to bring pageantry, fire, and excitement to any party. But it's the tiny lantern that's the star of this show. The Fourteenth Annual Lantern Festival kicked off at the El Pueblo Historical Monument near the Chinese-American Museum, with Chinese folk dancing, martial arts, and acrobatics of all sorts.
The great thing about the Lantern Festival is that it starts the beginning of spring.
And free springtime activities help kids of all ages express their inner creative child, from lantern-making to dragon drawing and more. But it was definitely the Lion Dance which drew the attention.
The dragons dance so, so awesome. They're awesome.
Oh, well, lions, dragons, it's easy to get the two mixed up. Though we did hear there was a majestic silver dragon dance at the end of the show. At any rate, these are the tame kinds of lions and dragons. Positing for pictures is allowed, as is shaking hands with and petting the animals. And as the Lantern Festival draws to a close, another springtime season is now in full bloom. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Award-winning paintings by children under the title "My Happiness" are also on exhibit at the Chinese-American Museum as part of this year's Lantern Festival festivities. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook or at Twitter. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. Offering your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Sergeants call the members, have them.
Hello?
I need one more member, Sergeant. Johnson find me a member. Good morning. Good morning, good morning. Shhh. Today is Wednesday, March 18th. This is your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, I may be wrong, but I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonapos, Gano, Cedeo, and Leonard Fuentes, Suez Arcaresco, Coria Labons, Martinez, Ferro Parks, Price, Westen, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Oh, Mr. Price moves, Corretts second. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bynan moves, Bloomingfield seconds. Next?
Mr. President, items one through 15 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on items one, four, and 15.
Let's hold those items. Members specials. Mr. Fuentes?
Mr. President, if we could go ahead and defer item two for a couple of weeks?
Okay, let's take item two. Two weeks will be?
March 27, sir.
Really?
Excuse me, March 25.
Okay, thank you. All right. No, that's still...
That's one week, sir.
It's like April.
Mr. President, two weeks brings us to April 1st.
Okay, thank you. All right, now let's, uh, members on the remaining items? Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Let's move on to the next section. Uh, Mr. Clerk?
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, sir. Uh, items 16 through 26 are items which public hearings have been held. A Planning and Land Use Management Committee report for item 18 has been circulated. However, items 19 and 20 should be referred back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Okay, so without objection, that's what we'll do with items 19 and 20. Mr. Labons?
Seventeen, please.
Can we hold seventeen for Mr. Labons? Mr. Parks?
Have special on eighteen?
Eighteen we'll hold for, uh, Mr. Parks. Uh, questions on the remaining items? Okay, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. And the entire council says good morning to Big John Muckrey, who's with us today. Good morning, Big John. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Items 27 through 38 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, uh, those items are before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on items 27, 28, 30, 33, 35, 36, and 37.
Okay, let's hold, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items, unless members want to call one of them special. I don't see that. So on the remaining items, could we please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, again, those ordinances will go over, uh, for a second read unless, uh, reconsidered later with 12 members.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Cracorian, before we go into the next couple of items, what is your recommendation, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, both of the closed session, uh, both of the items agendized for closed session are recommendations of settlement, uh, that have been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations in both cases. They should be non-controversial, so unless mayor, uh, any members have questions, we can consider those an open session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. If you could please, uh, read those items?
Very good, sir. Item 39 in the case entitled Ulysses Gaska versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $400,000 in settlement. And for item 40 in the case entitled Tina R. Harrow et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $251,004.66 plus accrued interest in satisfaction of judgment.
Okay, let's, uh, prepare to vote on those items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings item, uh, that brings council, uh, to presentations or items called special.
Let me look to Mr. Corretts to see if you'd like to begin now, or do you want me to take up a few items, uh, Mr. Corretts?
Uh, we'd like, we'd like to have the city attorney join us if we could wait a minute or two hours.
Okay.
Oh, actually, he is, um, well, I, I guess we'll be happy to begin with the presentation.
All right, so then the floor is yours.
Well, good morning, Mr. President and members. Today we salute the 11th Annual Mediation Awareness Week and the leaders of mediation who promote harmony, friendly dialogue, peaceful outcomes, and positive solutions. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Daniel Benzvi, the founder and chair of Mediation Awareness, who developed Mediation Awareness Week as a way to promote awareness of mediation and the importance of it to the public, the legal bar, and government officials throughout L.A. County. Uh, Mr. Benzvi conceived of Mediation Awareness Week in 2004 with former City Councilwoman Wendy Gruel. Now in its 11th year, Mediation Awareness Week in Los Angeles is more important than ever due to the elimination of the Los Angeles Superior Court Dispute Resolution Program and the closure of 10 courthouses and 60 courtrooms throughout Los Angeles County. And, uh, now I'd like to introduce our city attorney, Mike Fewer, to say a few words.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Corretts. Uh, members, Mr. President, I, I just wanted to be here for a few moments to join with Mr. Corretts and this terrific team assembled here to focus on the benefits of mediation, and in particular, to acknowledge a leader in my office, uh, Shanghai Maguun Amsteh, who's right here. And Shanghai is the head of our dispute resolution program. Uh, the real focus I wanted to bring to this can boil down to this. There are so many disputes which the justice system confronts every day that can most effectively be handled, not through an adversarial process, but they're trying to find common ground. We find that is true in the political system, it's also true in the justice system, and that's the work that Shanghai leads in our office, whether it's a neighbor-to-neighbor dispute or something more significant. And the last thing I wanted to say is this. Some of you are aware around this council of a marvelous new program that our office has inaugurated called the Neighborhood Justice Program, through which we recruit volunteers throughout the city of Los Angeles, train them in principles of mediation, and then, when a quality-of-life offender commits an offense in their community, if that person chooses to accept responsibility for his or her actions, we say, "We will not prosecute you if you attend Neighborhood Justice." And these trained volunteers describe the impact on the community that that offense had. They prescribe an outcome that must happen, they prescribe for the offender what he or she must do to help restore the community. And a member of my office is also there to prescribe an intervention, whether it be job training, or anger management, or some other regime. If the offender agrees to perform all that is assigned, there's no prosecution. That program is drawing applause in neighborhoods throughout the city of Los Angeles. We are actively recruiting additional volunteers who find this very rewarding. And I know that their involvement in this process, the involvement that Shanghai inspires and the volunteers of our dispute resolution program, where people are helping shape positive outcomes by listening to each other, is a model for all of us in the city. So for all who are assembled here, all around here, I want to say thank you very much. And to Shanghai in particular, thank you again for your leadership in our office.
Thank you, Mike. And now I'd like to ask Daniel Benzvi, the founder of, uh, Mediation Awareness Week, to speak.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Paul Corretts, and thank you for your keynote speech last night at the reception kicking off Mediation Awareness Week. Uh, thank you for the former sponsors of Mediation Awareness Week, uh, Councilmember Wesson, Boskayino, Zine. Um, and I'm, uh, so proud that we are here celebrating and recognizing the importance and great value of mediation, be it a government program that the city attorney just mentioned, or volunteer mediators, or the professional skilled mediators that are right now opening their doors and conference rooms today, in hundreds of places today around the city of L.A. And by the end of today, most of those mediations will end with settlement agreements, with happy, productive citizens of our society walking out of there feeling that they had a fair forum to resolve their disputes. Could you imagine the courts, the, the huge savings to our cash-strapped court system if, uh, we needed all those disputes resolved in the court system? Final comment is a description of mediation. If a doctor said to you, "You had a very serious illness, and you had two choices. One, to either go to, uh, take control of the problem yourself by diet, exercise, or medication, or go directly to a surgeon." Of course, you'd go to try to take control of the problem yourself. That is mediation. Mediation is attempting to take control of the problem yourself, and then, if it doesn't work with a skilled mediator guiding the, the process, then you go and turn over your dispute to a judge, jury, or arbitrator. Thank you very much.
Do you want to, by name, introduce?
What?
By name, do you want to introduce each person?
Good morning. My name is Floyd Siegel. I am the president-elect of Southern California Mediation Association. Robin Weinstein, who is the president of the organization, could not be here today because she, um, is a brand-new mother. Her son Graham is three weeks old, so I'm, I've been asked to, um, to share the following with you on her behalf. Mediation is often referred to as an alternative form of dispute resolution, but the fact is that more disputes are resolved by way of mediation than by court proceedings and arbitration combined. Yet, paradoxically, mediation remains the form of dispute resolution that is least known and most misunderstood by the public at large. Mediation Awareness Week provides an opportunity to educate the public about the value of mediation and the many quality mediation services that are available in Southern California. Our goal during Mediation Awareness Week is to remind our community leaders, business leaders, the legal community, and the public at large about the important work that mediators do as peacemakers. As the hub of the Southern California mediation community, the Southern California Mediation Association, along with various ADR organizations, associations, nonprofits, private panels, and educational institutions, is celebrating Mediation Awareness Week by hosting a variety of events, all of which are listed on our Mediation Awareness Week calendar. On behalf of the Southern California Mediation Association, I'd like to thank Councilman Corretts and the entire city council for this important proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, President Wesson and, and council members. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Joe Barrett, and I am the president of the Consumer Attorneys Association of Los Angeles. As many of you know, we are the trial lawyers for the people. We are the lawyers that work on a contingency fee and try to make our city safer, our police more responsible, products safer, protect our elderly, fairness in the workplace. And, uh, I'm here also, uh, with Southern California Defense Council's representative, and between the two of us, we are the ones that file lawsuits and defend those suits in a civil context, so I'm proud to be here for this mediation day, because mediation is something that we encourage. It's dispute resolution. So many people have disputes and they seek fairness, whether it's on behalf of private companies, the city, or individuals. We all seek fairness, and mediation is something we believe in, and we're very proud to be here. Thank you.
Now, thank you. In fact, thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Good morning, President Wesson. My name is Chris Faienza. I'm an, uh, officer with the Association of Southern California Defense Council. It is the largest state and local defense bar in the country, and we run counter to what the plaintiffs, um, with Mr. President Barrett just said, but we're very proud to be here. Um, Mr. Barrett talked about being there for consumers. We're there for the business and the people who get sued. Unfortunately, the president of our organization, Mike Schoenbach, could not be here because he didn't settle his case during his medi, um, mediation, and he's in trial today. So he loses by not using mediation to his benefit. But I want to thank you. Mediation is important. Our members volunteer their time to mediate. Uh, we're involved with a lot of the organizations, with the court systems in mediation, and we thank you all for your time.
Thank you as well.
Good morning. Uh, Michael Young, I'm with the International Academy of Mediators. Uh, when I, when I went into the law, I went to help people, and when I asked the law firm for the tools of this dispute resolution, they gave me interrogatories, requests for admissions, objections, uh, poison pen letters, uh, threats of sanctions, and I was thinking, "This is not right." And then, uh, at the firm, where I really told Councilman Huizar everything I know about the law, and it didn't take very long, um, I was introduced to mediation, and my eyes were wide open. And I've been mediating since 1989. The International Academy of Mediators is an organization comprised of some of the most, uh, um, well, the busiest mediators in North America, Europe, and elsewhere. And I want to re, just mention two things. One is, if you look at the mediators who are making a living at that in this community, the profession has come along, they look a lot like me. Old white guys. Um, we are doing something about that. Uh, we are trying to mentor younger mediators, mediators who are, uh, of unrepresented or underrepresented in the community, to try to bring them along so that we have a much broader profession. Um, and, secondly, mediation, as you've heard, is such a powerful force in litigation, dispute resolution. Um, it costs a lot of money for some of these top people. So a lot of disputes are being priced out, and we're trying to resolve that as well by, um, introducing a pro bono mediation project where we combine our efforts with some of the pro bono departments of some of the big law firms, um, providing free mediation disputes. So I just want to say, I want to thank this body because it really has encouraged the development of mediation to the point where it is a profession, and that the profession is taking it seriously and trying to make it available to everybody. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Mark Ameli, and I'm here to represent the Beverly Hills Bar Association. I'm the chair of the Conflict Resolution, Sectional Conflict Resolution of the Beverly Hills Bar Association, and also, uh, I'm here on behalf of the mediators beyond borders that promotes, uh, mediation throughout the world. And, uh, I thank, uh, all of you for supporting this worthy cause. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Hi, um, my boss here decided we would sandwich you guys to remind you guys about the free service that you have right here in this building. Our dispute resolution program is on the 14th floor, absolutely free, so we have volunteer mediators. I'd like to thank my staff and all of our volunteer mediators that provide this free service to the community. We handle any kind of dispute you can imagine. Also, we have a free 40-hour training that begins the week of April 27th, absolutely free, one of the best mediation training programs in the city, in the county, I'll say. And we have a wonderful luncheon that we'll be doing to celebrate all the free work that we do on May 29th, and our boss will be there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Corretts, I have a few members that would like to say a few words. I'd first like to recognize Mr. Tom Labons.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you for your leadership and collaboration is the key to our future success. And so, Ohio, you're a very special city employer, it's very, you're able to put people together on a mission. And all these excellent barristers who stepped up to collaborate and help others out solves our problems. At the end of the day, how much pressure can we take off people in the variety of lives? An old buddy of mine from high school came into City Hall today, and he was telling about a lot of guys we went to high school with, and young ladies who had challenges in life, that maybe if they had this avenue, they would have met whatever their fate was. So this is very special. I thank you. And, Mr. Corretts, you're always there bringing people together. Uh, Mr. Cracorian and I remarked, this is the longest speaking of each individual speaker, uh, and I said, "That's because they're all attorneys." No, I'm kidding you. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Great job. Great job. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. Kukorian, Paul Kukorian.
Yeah, nice setup for me, Tom, talking about the attorneys who want to speak. I being one of those, I'm going to take the opportunity to speak. I spent over 20 years as a business litigator in a world of zealous, fierce advocacy, trying cases and trying to defend interests and pursue interests. And more often than not, in those cases, I thought, this is something that should be resolved. This is something that, you know, really, both parties are squandering their own resources and the public's resources in pursuing these claims to the bitter end. And I just think that what all of you are doing in encouraging mediation, it certainly helps the public, first of all, because we have a court system that is severely strained, that doesn't have nearly enough resources to accommodate the amount of litigation in pursuit of people's legitimate interests already. And despite the effort, the great efforts, the heroic efforts of our city attorney when he was chair of the Judiciary Committee in the Assembly to try to defend our courts against budget cuts, the truth is, they've been severely, severely harmed because of those budget cuts. So we just don't have enough resources. We don't have enough courtrooms. We don't have enough judges. We don't have enough people working in the courtrooms to be able to accommodate all the litigation that's going through them. And so mediation is critically important to the administration of justice. But it's also critically important to the parties involved to not let their own emotions get in the way of their interests. And that's, I think, very often where mediation comes in, and being able to bring a positive, productive resolution of a dispute that would otherwise drag on and cost everybody a lot of money. I also want to thank our city attorney and his, all of the city, all of the staff who's involved in the neighborhood dispute resolution program. This is a way that we can actually see positive results that doesn't divide people any further than they're already divided, and it's been a huge success. And I'd like to see us continue to encourage more people to take advantage of the resources that are available to be able to resolve those disputes. So, Mr. Coretts, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming here today, and thank you for continuing to change our collective mindset about how we resolve disputes and how we bring justice to the people who need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me put on my senior lead officer hat, as I often do on this horseshoe, and recall many times dealing with neighbor disputes, loud barking dogs, family disputes, and the dispute resolution program was a tool in our toolbox that senior lead officers continue to use throughout the city of Los Angeles. And just want to arise and say thank you for your ongoing efforts and commitment to be in the forefront. And, Mr. Fuhr, for you and your team for continuing to embrace the dispute resolution program. And, Mr. Coretts, thank you for bringing them all in, for allowing us to give them an opportunity, giving us an opportunity to thank, thank you for all your ongoing commitment and dedication to our city. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts, back to you.
I just want to say now it's our honor, on behalf of the city council and city attorney, to declare this mediation awareness week, March 18th through 25th, 2015. And to make that presentation.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. This is a great presentation, and to all of you, thank you for the work that you do. Again, thank you, Mr. Clerk. No disruption from the audience, Mr. Herman. Mr. City Attorney, I just want to put it on the record that he is disrupting this meeting as usual. Let us go to reconsider the ordinances. Mr. City Attorney, we do have 12 members present, so if we could vote on reconsideration?
Yes, sir. Those would be items 12, 13, 14, 16, 29, 31, and 32.
Okay, let us vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send item 16 forthwith.
Okay, without objection.
Mr. Clerk, next item is item 28, called Special By Card, John Walsh, 28.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, and for identification purposes only, proud member of Fight the L.A. Drought Now. Number 28 concerns Neighborhood Council database. This is something you should have done 15 years ago, set up a database so you can get in there. We need the Neighborhood Councils now more than ever to fight in the trenches against the drought. Remember, all your corruption has produced the drought. Now we want a database of Neighborhood Councils, those that are not controlled by developers, so we can go there and fight the drought right in the puddles. End the drought now. Are you listening, God?
No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, number 30. Sean Murphy.
Yes, good morning, Sean Murphy. Item 30 is a good item. I support it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
33, called Special By A Card, William Ernest Shemrick.
William Shemrick, I oppose 33 because it raises the price of energy. Every $10 somebody spends puts a kilogram of carbon into the sky, or 3.7 kilograms of carbon dioxide. By raising the marginal rate of electricity, this causes more carbon dioxide to be released, even though this particular source does not release carbon dioxide by itself.
No speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item, 35. John Walsh, item 35.
Mr. President, there's been a request from a member to send 28 forthwith, sir.
28 forthwith, thank you. For Mr. Parks, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Notice no discussion of this issue. It's the most important issue up here. It concerns gauging meters and collection and storage and delivery of flow data of the wastewater collection system. We don't have one now. Why are we in worse shape than any other city in California? Read it. Read it. They're locking the barn door after the water has destroyed the barn. Installation, calibration, of course, they're paying too much for it, but it's something we should have had many, many years ago. Look at the water. It wastes the sea. And now, who's going to pay for it? The homeowners. We can't even drink water at the restaurants now as you waste water. For shame. Everybody up here, including every mayor for the last three years, water wasters.
No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Right now, for just a moment, I'd like to ask my old high school mate, John Rice, who came into city council since he first time. John, I want to salute you for your work in the community and your family, the Rice family, longtime John Marshall High graduate. Said he was going to start when he went to Pierce, and I started when I went to City College. Welcome to City Hall again, John. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. ... And then we'll be 37. We'll get a picture. 37, we have our cards right here. Mr. Sadio, could I call the cards first? What would your pleasure, sir?
Cards first? Go ahead. Cards first.
John Walsh, item 37.
How old is this city? 200 years. They just got a great idea here. Develop a clean streets, L.A. strategy. Who knew? Now we know why the streets are filthy, especially east of La Brea. They keep the streets west of La Brea, where the wealthy white people live. You could eat off the streets. But the rest of us, the blacks, the browns, and the poor whites who live east of La Brea, it's filthy. Now, the only way you can clean it up was with water, and you overdo the amount of water you use on the white neighborhoods, and you don't use any money. And I'm asking one black or brown person to come to me and say, I live south of Wiltshire, and my streets are clean. These streets, and remember, this is an all-white jury up here. Clean streets strategy, my ass. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman.
A strategy to clean our neighborhoods, Mr. Price, yours is the worst neighborhood because Mr. Sadio has done an excellent job in his district, District 1, and I commend him for his excellence in contributing to our welfare and health and safety by providing clean streets. Although the strategy, Mr. Price, on behalf of the public, apparently doesn't fit the description of a 60-day how to clean up our neighborhood, all I can say, for better interest of the public, is this: If the city attorney would enforce an ordinance, we wouldn't have to waste the douchebag coffers of the city monies to come up with this ridiculous idea, Mr. Price. People in your area want and always wanted a clean neighborhood. Every politician that sat in your district wants a clean neighborhood. Look at the example of Mr. Sadio now, providing us better, cleaner sewers, taking care of potholes, sidewalk and streets improvements. So not like Jose Weezer, the loser who can't fix our sidewalk and streets in District 14, although this is an item in consideration and motion for the public's interest, I say to you, flush your toilet twice before you say this is an engagement of strategies, because I have a solution to the engagement of strategy. Be more proactive, not sitting there, not saying anything in protest against me, because I'm ready to debate what a clean community should look like with you, sir. And as Robin Hood was here yesterday and made an excellent point, I save it for Robin Hood, and I call out to Batman to reserve your one second. Bye.
Wayne Spindler.
Alls you do is leave the city of Los Angeles city limits. I was in San Bernardino County yesterday. Every street clean, sidewalks neat. Why can't we do it? Because you're stealing all the money for the pensions. That's why we don't have clean streets. Now, the John and Ken Show came out to your little nightmare, the secret of L.A., Skid Row, your dirty little 50-square-block evil little playground that you dumped the prisoners and you dumped everybody's jailed people into the streets so you can claim that you're reducing the amount of inmates incarcerated. You're dumping these people out in the streets. You're letting them rot. You're letting them die. You're letting them kill each other. And then the others that don't kill each other, you send the LAPD to assassinate the rest. That's why you need to clean up the streets. You start in this street. Everybody resign. That's how you start cleaning up the streets. Put 15 people, open a phone book, and put them in those seats, and in six months, you'll clean up the streets. That's why the streets aren't clean. Now, one commentator said in CD 14, there is a councilman, he's stealing the money from all the other departments, but he's cleaning the streets of CD 14. Jose Weezer deserves our applause. Now, can the other 14 of you do the same? Get the money? Fix a couple of sidewalks every day? Pave a street? And most of all, turn on the sprinklers to water the dead lines? Thank you.
Completes the card now, the champion of this cause from the First District at the Great Seat of Angels, Gil Sadio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me begin by just reminding everybody that when I campaigned, one of the great observations of walking through the streets and campaigning was I just noticed how much trash there was throughout the district. And I found it shocking, and I found it to be our central talking point. Shortly after we took office, we spent 10 weeks going throughout the district, and the consensus, the number-one issue, was the concern about trash on the streets. As you know, we began with a pilot in our district, and many, many of our colleagues have emulated those pilots. And now, we're very excited to say that we have a comprehensive report, a report that is quite impressive in its depth and understanding of the challenges that confront us. I want to give particular attention to the author, Mark Thomas, for his really sophisticated understanding of what are the broader policies that impact trash collection in our city and cities throughout the nation. And so, I want to share with you, colleagues, a few things that we've done in our district. I'm very proud of the efforts and the collaboration that's taken place with Enrique Zaldivar's Department of Sanitation and our office. We've picked up 2,500 tons of trash in the first 16 months in office. 2,500 tons of trash in the first 16 months. We've cleaned up 286 alleys. We've hosted 36 cleanups. That means we're doing a cleanup every other week in our district, and that doesn't count the other independent cleanups that have taken place. We've sent over 5,000 letters outlining our Keep It Clean campaign. We've knocked and canvassed 7,000 homes, educating them how important our campaign is. We've visited schools to read to children. In fact, I've got three readings this week coming up, talking to young people. We've done this in our effort to bring basic services to our community. We believe that rich or poor in this city, everybody deserves to have a clean street in front of their home. We're doing this, and we're beginning to develop this program and create a better program with a program we call SANSTAT. SANSTAT is much like ComStat. We're going to bring data and resources so that we understand with more exactness... We're going to bring data and resources so that we understand with more exactness what are the challenges that confront us with trash. We want to make sure, not every block in this city is the same. We want to make sure we're putting all the resources where they're needed and concentrating those resources. We have the resources. We have the trucks. We don't have the trashcans, but we have the trucks. But most importantly is, we have the people power. And the people power, with a vision, with a plan, with leadership, we're going to clean up this city, and we're going to make it the cleanest city in America. And we have a report today that gives us a framework for that. And so, I'm very happy with that, to turn this over to our CIO, Miguel Santana. But again, because I'm so impressed with his work, I just want to commend Mark Thomas for just a brilliant, brilliant report, and giving us a framework for us to move forward to become the cleanest city in America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well done, Jill.
Good morning. Miguel Santana, CIO. I'm joined by Enrique, our General Manager of Sanitation, as well as by Mark Thomas, who came to us as a FUSE fellow. FUSE Core is a program that brings private-sector individuals into the public sector for one year. And we partner with FUSE Core to specifically look at the issue of trash in the city. What you have before you is a report that really represents a collaboration of various departments, the mayor's office, some of your council offices, that tries to take the issue of trash and looking at it much more objectively, and coming up with a series of recommendations that address the problem on an ongoing basis. Much of this was inspired, of course, by the mayor, who has made a commitment to a back-to-basics approach to governing, and to many of you who, when you first came into office, came to us and urged us to help in developing a strategy around trash. At the very core of the recommendation is to use trash, use this approach similar to what the LAPD does with ComStat. You know, at the very foundation of policing is an idea of moving resources where the need is, and establishing a basic standard of public safety, and in this case, we're recommending a basic standard of cleanliness in the neighborhood, and using data as a way of determining where resources get allocated and ultimately where investments are made. I'll have Mark walk you through the presentation summarizing the report. What you'll notice here, a little different from my office, there aren't any dollars symbols here, because this is not about dollars and cents at this point, but ultimately it will be. What we're recommending today is a framework. It is not a plan. And if your council were to move forward on it, we urge you to consider our recommendation to assign much of this work and collaboration to the Board of Public Works, who will work closely with our office and sanitation and the other departments, to develop a plan for your approval, which would include how would we finance it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. And so, for our first recommendation, we proposed developing a proactive scout program. And one of the weaknesses in our existing system is that it responds really to a complaint-driven approach. And so, we have systems that are very reactive, and they respond very well once things are reported. And so, we've taken a cue from the success around our graffiti program, where seventy-five percent of that that we respond to is actually proactively identified and addressed. And in previous years, there have been many scout-like programs where the CRA, where different council offices have worked with our community partners to identify quality-of-life conditions and report them to our systems. We're proposing to institutionalize that program, which will optimize how the city deploys, how it works with those partners to identify, report those conditions, and provide a baseline for us on a recurring basis on what those needs are. Now, our second recommendation is to adopt, consistent with the vision for SANSTATs, a cleanliness rating index. And you have to think about this as really ComStat for cleanliness, where we'll send analysts out who actually rate the level of cleanliness of each street, each neighborhood, and provide that data for our departments and for us to allocate resources on where they need to be targeted. This is important, because in an urban environment, all of our streets are constantly changing, pedestrian behavior. Those things really require us to be responsive to those needs. And if you look at the chart, you see where Philadelphia has adopted a rating index, and where you see high red are areas that they identified as extreme litter. If you look a few years later, they've actually been able to use this tool, which has been adopted by Keep America Beautiful. And as an affiliate, we have access to their resources and their support to develop one This next slide actually shows San Francisco, which has adopted a cleanliness rating index as well. And they set a series of standards around what every street should look like, and each year, they're required to report how successful they've been at achieving those standards. Now, recommendation three is expanding our trashcan presence. We only have about a thousand trashcans currently that the city operates. Compared to other cities that have the type of pedestrian density that we have, we trail, and it's something that we're actually working with, seeing where that need is. We already have information of where the highest trash-generating parts of the city are, and so, we want to work with sanitation to develop a proposal for the council. Number four is exploring how we fund cleanups. And so, you see a picture of one of the Clean Streets L.A. programs that's cleaned a residential area of the city. And so, we have a lot of different tools at our disposal to make sure that we're optimizing how the existing resources are spent to ensure that we have a clean city. Number five is supporting business improvement district development. This is important, because Los Angeles joins New York as really having the highest density of commercial corridors in the country. And so, business improvement districts and other collaborations with our commercial parts of the city are really key to really making sure they do, they work with us to make sure their areas are clean. And so, we've been looking at models and best practices that allow us to strengthen our existing relationship with our business improvement districts, but also optimize what we provide and their value add on top of what baseline the city provides. Number six is launching a public engagement campaign. Once we have meaningful data to really see what the baseline of the city's cleanliness looks like, we actually want to pilot a campaign to see how public engagement and a pride campaign will actually improve the outcomes. Number seven is strengthening our coordination of enforcement. And so, when you look at all the different parts of the city's physical infrastructure, making sure that the systems are collaborative, that the departments are working in coordination will enable us to fill those gaps around enforcement and provide an accountability structure for people who violate those laws. Number eight is really looking at a long-term solution to reducing the blight on the city's vacant land parcels. Los Angeles has roughly twenty-two-thousand vacant land parcels. About two-thousand are public, the other are private. We're ultimately responsible for eliminating blight, and so, a long-term solution would be managing how we manage existing land parcels, but ultimately trying to reduce them over time. And number nine is actually modernizing and updating our street sweeping program. This program was developed in the 1970s. The city's changed tremendously as far as its activity, its density, where people travel, how transit interacts with our streets. And we really think it's good timing now for us to re-explore how and where the city allocates that resource to ensure a clean city. And now, I'll turn recommendation ten back over to Miguel.
So, the final recommendation is about accountability. So, if you look at the very success of the LAPD ComStat, is that it's accountable ultimately to the chief. And it's the chief's responsibility to deploy resources where demand is based on data, which is the approach that we're recommending here. We're recommending that the council and the mayor direct this program to be under the oversight of the Board of Public Works. They ultimately have the ability to direct, develop, implement, and monitor this kind of program, given their oversight responsibility over all the bureaus, and ensures that there's sustainability beyond just the immediate, but on the long term. Enrique, would you like to add any comments?
Very briefly, Miguel. Enrique Zaldivar, General Manager of Sanitation. I appreciate Councilmember Sadio's leadership, as well as Councilmember Price, for calling on sanitation, as did Councilmember Bonin and many of you at the start of your terms, recognize the urgency of what abandoned waste and other kinds of blight-causing phenomena have on the general look of the city. Ironically, this year, for the first time, sanitation has a direct responsibility and accountability for abandoned waste. We have not had it before, yet we have incredible expertise and know-how, logistics and otherwise, and the understanding of the general solid waste management spectrum. But for the first time now, throughout our Clean Streets program, we are answering the call for you, as well as the report on Miguel, on the broader approach to making this city the cleanest city in America. Thank you.
Very good. Now, I'd like to turn it back to Mr. Sadio.
We have comments from our colleagues?
Yeah, a lot of them. Here we go, right here, starting with Mr. Fuentes right now.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And thank you, Enrique and Miguel, for bringing this report forward. Very excited to have received it yesterday, to have read it. Looking forward to the components of this as it moves forward to make its way to my committee, because I do have a couple of ideas. But I wanted to share with you a couple of observations. I think it's really important for us to recognize, I think, sort of the fundamental problem with litter and illegal dumping. And I think it's the lack of people's respect and understanding for the public space. I think the challenge in Los Angeles in particular is that we go from space one, which is home, to space two, which is work, and occasionally, we get to space number three, which is your favorite coffee bar, coffee shop, restaurant, that sort of thing. And so, there's an underlying principle here that I think is sort of lost a little bit. And I don't know how you memorialize it, but it's the recognition and appreciation, and really, colleagues, the need for a clean public space. And I think that if we were able to facilitate more bike lanes, for example, facilitate more walkable communities, then there would be a real opportunity for the everyday resident to have to occupy that public space and recognize that there is something that we each can do to make sure that we keep it clean. I hate to sort of hearken back to the good old days, where people would really take care of the frontage of their property and sweep. I think that's sort of a simple thing that we need to figure out how to, as Eddie almost did, bring back our brooms and figure out how to take back the streets. I think that's something that we do as council offices each and every weekend when we perform cleanups, et cetera. But I recognize that this is trying to address some of the larger problems, which is something that I really appreciate. So I wanted to make sure that we don't lose sight of, if we've got more people on the street, we'd be able to be more vigilant and be proactive as the scout sort of initiative intends to try to do. But an observation here, so, the business improvement district model, I think, is phenomenal where it works. In council districts like mine, for example, a lot of the commercial corridors where we experience, and industrial corridors where we experience a lot of illegal dumping, our areas are largely owned by trusts. So it makes it very difficult to be able to populate an election that is favorable to the institutionalizing of a business improvement district. And so, then it makes us have to look at the alpha model of a BID, which doesn't necessarily sort of suit the needs that we have. So I absolutely love the idea of where you're going to strengthen bids, but when you have districts like mine, where I think bids have struggled traditionally, and so, we've got to figure out another model of trying to incentivize people to participate in the solution. Recent trip to Washington, D.C., colleagues, I think, if you just walk around town, you recognize that a majority of Washington, D.C. has some type of community benefit district, whether it's a BID or residential-based one, that pays for the increased public space amenities like covered shelters, more trash receptacles, but equally important, the actual maintenance of the space, the public space. And so, I think that's something that we need to sort of fine-tune if we're going to go along the routes of a sort of property-tax-based sort of funding solution. Another observation that I'd like to sort of just share, and I'll push my button again, Mr. Labange, is that this really recognizes the tremendous partnership that we have with the Office of Community Beautification. It recognizes a model in the graffiti abatement process that we have known has been that little engine that could in Los Angeles, and I'm thrilled to death to recognize that this is now going to build upon that model. But I come back to sort of the need and desire to have more than just our scouts out there. I would love to see how it is that we're going to engage the public, whether it's neighborhood councils, whether it's non-formal groups or formalized groups in the city. If we educate people on how it is that they can report this, how it is that they can make sure that the accountability is there for picking up, then we'd solve half of the problem, in my opinion. So I appreciate the need to be more proactive, but I think there's a real need for us to really begin a more fortified education process of our constituents. The last thing that I'll say is that, you know, I really think that the problem can be boiled down really simply. If we just educate, enforce, maintain, repeat, we'd get to where we need to be. And I appreciate everything that you all are doing, but would love very much to, when the time comes, to speak to the funding, because there is a lot of overlap on how it is that these problems affect other problems that we have, mainly MS4 compliance and the things that we need to do. And I'd hate to have a smattering of rate impacts here, here, and here, where maybe we could leverage all of our efforts to sort of give the most bang for our buck to the ratepayer, and ultimately, to the public space that is Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Bustaño.
Thank you. As Chair of Public Works, I just want to acknowledge my colleague on the committee, Mr. Sadio, for wrapping his arms around this critical issue and trying to do what we can to improve our quality of life in the city of Los Angeles. I just bang my head every time people take the steps to dump in our city. You said we also have to focus on personal responsibility. Oftentimes, as a senior lead officer, I saw it. I'm seeing it more so as a council member. Every other week, we have community cleanups. We can do our part, but it also, we need to realize and also identify the fact that there's folks out there who are taking upon themselves to trash our neighborhoods. I want to thank Mark for your report, Mr. Santana, Enrique Carlos for embracing this entire concept. This report provides a great roadmap for us to begin to address one of the most common complaints we hear from our constituents, and that's the proliferation of trash that creates blight in our communities. Through the financial outlook of our city and looking at our numbers in this coming budget cycle, we're still have a deficit of $100 million. We're still finding ways to address this issue, but simply throwing money at the problem and continuing the status quo is not an option. We need to rethink the way we address the problem of litter and illegal dumping. We deploy sanitation resources the same way we need to deploy sanitation resources the same way we deploy police resources. And for us, Enrique, Sarah Washington is just a champion for us in CD fifteen. We have a great working relationship with her. We also need to expand our relationships and the use of our nonprofit partners. In CD fifteen, again, this report is fantastic, but we're doing this already in my district, working with nonprofits like the Beacon House, Don Wrigley, and Salvador Lara, this constituent Wilmington, who's taken upon himself through his nonprofit Clean Wilmington, LACC, Carlos Cordoso, Steve Kleingen, who works with Clean San Pedro, another nonprofit that has partnered with the San Pedro bid, Victor Medina at the Gang Alternative Program, Gap. As a former police officer, I strongly believe that we need to increase enforcement of our existing laws against illegal dumping. Let me paint a picture for you, specifically in Watts. We work with sanitation. We work with the community. Beacon House, we deploy Beacon House in a specific location in Watts. We pick up the trash. Days later, that same alley's dumped on again. So we're going to pass around an amending motion that it's going to call for a comprehensive program on seeking the rest and conviction of these knuckleheads who are dumping in our city by deploying license-recognition cameras throughout these hotspot alleys in my district and throughout the South Los Angeles area. By using this new technology, we can assist law enforcement with providing the evidence needed to secure prosecutions and chronic illegal dumpers. Couple of questions, I feel, if I can, direct to you. Do we know the cost differentials? Do we know what the cost differentials would be? Do we know what the cost differentials would be if we expand the use of local nonprofits like the ones that we contract for the Office of Beautification versus using or hiring additional city employees?
Check your time, Joe.
Thanks.
To respond to your question, that's exactly what the next step would be. And as you indicated, the Board of Public Works through the Office of Beautification already partners with a number of nonprofit organizations to deal with graffiti, and many of your offices go beyond that to help address a number of issues proactively. And so if your council were to move forward and direct us to take the next step, we would put a budget together of exactly what that would look like and how we would roll it out over a period of time.
Because I feel, specifically in South Los Angeles, having a substantially higher unemployment rate than the rest of the city, it would be more beneficial to utilize the services of local nonprofits who in turn hire local disadvantaged youth, and thus will not only increase trash pickup, but also reduce the local youth unemployment rate and save money for the city at the same time.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next speaker will be Mr. Price of the New Knights.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you, gentlemen, for the report. I really appreciate the depth and the thought that went into it. And of course, hats off to my colleague Gil, with whom we've been working closely on this issue. Certainly cleanliness is a quality of life issue, a basic quality of life issue, especially in communities that have been underserved and neglected over the years. When I came into office this last 18 months, we've been able to pick up about 3,000 tons trash, debris, bulky items from the alleys, from the parkways, from streets. We've had successful cleanup campaigns every month, in fact, led by the council office, working closely with community-based organizations, nonprofits, churches, et cetera. And that certainly has been an effective tool. And we realize that, and we've had almost 2 million square feet of graffiti removed. And again, largely working with community-based nonprofits that are suggested in the report, they have a real important, unique role to play. But the report is exciting in that it does, I think, set forth a framework for how we should maneuver. The Cleanness Index makes a lot of sense. Funding cleanups, obviously something we've been doing. Some council offices have done out of their budgets, and ours included. Public engagement, an important component with that, and enforcement and compliance, obviously, because if that doesn't happen, nothing's going to work. But special attention, I think, needs to be focused on alleys. You know, my district, of course, has the largest network of alleys, some 200-plus alleys, many of which have not been cleaned in years, years and years. And Mr. Busciano, you know, we certainly have that same phenomenon, where you clean an alley or clean an area that gets dumped, come back a week later, it's just like it was. And so we really have to, I think, have a major public service engagement campaign. We're in the schools, we're in churches, but it has to be a non-stop keep it clean campaign, not just in the Ninth District, but citywide. And I think that that's the kind of approach that's going to make sense. Trash cans, again, we're woefully under trash cans. You know, I made a commitment to put 500 trash cans out on the streets in my area. But putting the trash cans out is not enough. If they're not dumped, if they're not cleaned, you know, then they're overflowing and they become another magnet for waste and for homelessness and just all kinds of other problems. So it's certainly important to get these trash cans out, but we want to make sure that they get serviced, that they get dumped, and that there's quick and fast attention with dumping, you know, with cameras, with reward notices, with signage, et cetera. And we have to make it everybody's business, not just those who live along those areas where the dumping occurs. Because we're finding out that most of that dumping is coming from outside of the area. These are neighbors dumping in each other's area. These are folks that hop off the freeway, they'll dump, and then they'll hop right back on the freeway. And so we've got to be more sophisticated, I think, we need to be more proactive, we need to be more aggressive in apprehending them if we're serious about really making a dent. So I'm pleased to support this motion. I think it's a, we're on the right step. You know, some offices have been sort of implementing this program before. We appreciate the work with sanitation, Building Safety, Public Works, the collaboration. You know, that collaboration, we think, has been very effective in District Nine, sort of pulling resources together, focusing attention on problem areas, and then getting results, and then monitoring it, making sure that there's some feedback. So I'm just happy that we are at this point. I know that it's all about the budget. And Mr. Santana, again, I hope that we're able to come up with an approach that just doesn't divide this budget by 15, but focuses on those areas of real need, real neglect, and where attention needs to be focused, so that we can move the whole city forward. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, for your leadership on this. You have really made this your focus since you've joined the council, and it's been to the benefit of all of our districts. So thank you for that. And thank you to the three of you for the work on this. I think this report is really good. I'm looking forward to seeing it sort of fleshed out and figure out how to implement it. The need for it, I think, is even greater than it has been in the past. Having trash on the streets, having illegal dumping, having blight is always unacceptable, but I think it's even more unacceptable now, because I think the intention of the city, the intention of so many of us, is to focus on creating a sense of place in our different neighborhoods, to make neighborhoods not just more livable, but to make it a place where people spend their time, so that people stay in the local commercial or shopping district instead of driving across town to the mall, to make our neighborhoods feel more integrated and alive. So I think this is even more important than it has been in the past. I love the suggestion on the bids. The areas in my district where I have bids, you can tell. You can tell just by looking at them, because they're a willing community partner who stepped up. And I love the approach about trying to imitate what we do with our beautification team and graffiti. I think that's very good. I wanted to underscore, though, what Mr. Price said about trash cans. I could go on about the problems with dumping in Venice, and you've heard me do that many, many times, but there's also a problem with littering in the city of Los Angeles that really gives a blighted feel to a lot of our neighborhood business districts. And part of the problem is we just don't have enough trash cans. So I look forward to the recommendations that will help us figure out a way whether folks adopt more trash cans to get more trash cans, particularly, you know, near our parks, near our senior centers, near our mom and pop stores here in Los Angeles. As we do that, I'd encourage you to think about how the trash cans look. You know, I can tell when I drive to Santa Monica or Culver City or El Segundo, because their street lamps look better, their trash cans look nicer. I have spoken to our General Manager of Department of Transportation, Ad Nauseum, about how much I think our bike racks are ugly compared to other cities. And I'd like us to find a way to make our trash cans not look sort of industrial and standard. You know, maybe the ones in Venice can say, "Keep Venice beautiful." The ones in Pacoima can say, "Celebrate Pacoima," something like that. So I'd appreciate if you could look into that to help us create the sense of places, because Los Angeles isn't just a city, it's this big collection of interesting and vibrant neighborhoods and places. Thanks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed reading your report. I just was asking one thing, if you can consider. We just did a pilot program in the Eighth District where one recycler opened up his doors and provided free drop-off service to the community. Within 60 days, they collected somewhere between 1.5 and 1.6 million pounds of trash. And all of the programs that we've dealt with since I've been here are always after the fact. We're trying to catch the guy that dumps, we're putting cameras up and trying to catch this person. I think we even had an ordinance where someone, if they're dumping, could lose their vehicle, and I think the courts threw that out. But everything is after the fact. It would appear that if, from my perspective, is that we have often trained people where to dump, because we keep cleaning it up. But if they were able to take it somewhere for free, because years ago, there used to be places, junkyards, where you could drive in and drop your trash, you can drop things, all those have disappeared, because we've changed the dynamic, we don't have them, all the environmental stuff. But it would appear that if we had places that were identified, and whether they're city yards, that we go pick stuff up and take it to the city yard, if the public can bring their stuff to the city yard, and if, as this person did, if it's recyclable, they recycle, a person's brought in trash, if it was recyclable, they paid them for the recyclable items, or they took the trash and dumped it. The only thing they did not accept was liquids. So these are things that I would think we could rely on, I would think, the 80-plus percent of the people that want to do right, is give them a resource to take their trash and dump it, as opposed to leaving their mattresses and couches and everything else on the street. And the folks that are habitual, such as, I think, some of the small contractors and those who do housing repair, you can tell who has a job every Monday by what they drop in the alley over the weekend. And it generally is around places that are the refurbishment locations, such as the places they can buy their materials. But I think the bulk of the people in Los Angeles would enjoy the fact, if you told them that over at Yard One, you could dump your trash, they kept track of it by saying your first load was free. But I think if you gave people an option of saying you'd rather dump than here for free versus us hiring tons of people to chase them if they dump, we might get to the point that we train people to take their trash, put it where it should be, as opposed to training employees to go pick up the trash that they drop off.
Thank you. Mr. Blumentfelder, the Third District, West Valley.
Well, thank you. Most of what I was thinking about has been said, but I wanted to just add a couple of things. First, I wanted to, my thanks to Mr. Sadio for really spearheading this and bringing it forward and working it out in his district. We're all focused on the trash in our district. It's the broken window theory of other cities. It manifests itself by the trash on our streets. So it's really important. And finally getting our head around it by using data to drive that, I think, is a very important component. A lot of my colleagues talked about both the carrots and the sticks, and we need both for this. And particularly, we went through it quickly, but the number six about public engagement. It's about creating that pride, but it's also about engaging the community. I mean, one of the things we try to do when there's a lot of dumping in front of an apartment or something like that is we try to send letters out to those folks who live in that apartment, because of some of the issues that Mr. Parks raised, where people would, 80% or 90% of the people want to do the right thing, but they don't necessarily know how. But then there's the stick side of it, like Mr. Busciano was talking about with the license plate readers and, you know, cameras that go up where you, you know, you catch them or you shame them, or whatever the appropriate way is to move it along, which is equally important. But I just, both carrot and stick do belong also in number six in that public engagement piece, which I think is a really big part of what will make this successful. And I really just wanted to say thank you for doing this, and I look forward to, as it goes through E and E Committee, working more closely with you as we make it all happen. So thank you.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I think this also speaks to the larger issue of how we provide basic services in the city. Clean streets and trash is but one, but how quickly can we trim our trees, how quickly are we fixing our sidewalks, and all those other issues that really are the bread and butter of what the city should be providing for our constituents. And a lot of our, all of us are left to our own devices as council members to provide those services to fill those gaps. For example, as mentioned by Mr. Busciano and others, I contract out with nonprofits to pick up our trash, to help trim our trees. We're providing discretionary funding to fix our sidewalks. So we, as council members, are in essence kind of surviving out there to provide basic services for something for which should be provided in a more systematic fashion by the city. And I think this is a very good step, and not only providing the political support for the departments, but also paying more attention to this in a comprehensive manner. Because if we do little things here and there, for example, putting out cameras, as we did, or increasing the fines for people who continuously dump trash, we got to approach this on a comprehensive way, in a systematic way, and then relieve the local council offices from having to fill these gaps. That is not our primary responsibility. Our primary responsibility is to be legislators and to provide the departments the funding for their vision and their purpose, and then keep you guys accountable. But now we're having to fill that in. So I think this is a very important conversation that we should have, but it also should go on to speak about other areas as well, things beyond the Bureau of Sanitation, trimming trees, fixing sidewalks, all that. And I know it's not only a matter of money, but if you think about it, it's somebody else said this, Busciano said this, not only money, it's how we are providing that procedurally by the city, and how we can remove some of those obstacles, allow you guys to do the great job you guys are doing. And my hats off to the departments, the Bureau of Sanitation, others who are doing the best they can. But if we fix this more at a systematic level, get the support of the council, I think we could go a long way. So, you know, I just got off of a campaign, and let me tell you, at the end of the day, what our constituents want to see is us providing those basic services. And right now, a lot of us council members are dancing trying to find the funding and also trying to find the ways and the means to provide those very basic services. So my hats off to you guys, let's keep doing this, and we need to continue to have these conversations. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to echo the congratulations, especially from Mr. Sadio's leadership in driving this forward and the great work that the Department of Sanitation is already doing in advancing this important cause. I just, one quick point in response to something raised by Mr. Bonin regarding trash cans and the need to empty trash cans. One of the challenges that the city faces, of course, is the fact that there are trash cans throughout the city that have been placed by people unassociated with the city. Maybe it's a bid, maybe it's a private business. Sometimes neighborhood councils might fund the acquisition of a trash can, but if there isn't an ongoing, long-lasting arrangement for emptying those cans, it can compound the problem rather than reducing the problem. And I know that the department is already working on developing a comprehensive, citywide database of the location of each trash can and street trash can, and determining how it got there, whether it was a city trash can, or a bid trash can, or a neighborhood council trash can. And I'd just like to, if you can, Mr. Saldivar, if you can speak to that, and maybe when that might be, that project might be completed, and what the next steps might be in ensuring that we have a comprehensive pickup plan to go along with that long list of trash cans.
Thank you, Councilmember Krikorian. And, you know, on the very issue of the trash cans at the street corners and the significance and the implication it has, or they have over the general view of the neighborhood around it, we know that 1,000 of those are not enough. When Miguel was asking us what we think would be an optimal number of trash receptacles in the city, I said, "Well, I think every intersection in the city, at least major intersection, should have four trash cans, one at each corner." That is the ideal, optimal arrangement, I believe, because folks now have, phone in one hand, a cup of coffee on the other, and it's usually not a reusable coffee cup, it's a tossable coffee cup. So we got to make it convenient for folks to toss it. Now, I also believe that our interface with MTA, which most of those corners have a bus stop, I would love to be the service provider of all those trash receptacles. So for those of you who are on the MTA board, please make that happen, because that will give us incredible efficiency and interface, and they pay. MTA will pay. So by June, council member, we will have a clear inventory of where all those 1,000, and hopefully soon more of the trash cans are.
Terrific. Well, as soon as that's done in June, I have a feeling Mr. Bonin and I will be consulting closely about how we can ensure that those trash cans get emptied. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just again, wanted to, again, underscore the important roles nonprofits play, and give a shout out to CRCD in the Ninth District, that has done an extraordinary job working with us. The report didn't mention the homeless encampment situation. I know it's not really a part of this, but it is a part of this. Frequently, in the alleys, for example, there may be trash at both ends and an encampment in the middle. And that encampment has prevented the cleaning of the remainder of the alleys. And so I just want to make sure we realize it really has to be a holistic kind of approach. In some areas, these encampments are an impediment for removing trash, debris, bulky items, as they are in alleys. In addition to the trash they just generate, that's a real nuisance to the public, a nuisance to passersby, and again, something we just have to pay close attention to.
Councilman, thank you for pointing that out. You're absolutely right. We intentionally didn't address the issue of homeless encampments, because clearly it's a much more complicated issue. It's less of a technical problem rather than an issue that involves a comprehensive approach. approach, not just related to the city, but the county as well, to place our homeless in permanent supportive housing. And ultimately, the trash and the encampments are really a symptom of a much more significant issue that deserves its own separate attention. And so, we're also working with the mayor's office and on the direction of the council on a strategy dealing with that issue as well.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank Mr. Sadio, the 1st District, and the heart of the district. It used to be the 4th District, and there was always a challenge. Where there's density, there's trash. So, this is a big, big movement. And Mr. Thomas, great to meet you, and the energy that you're bringing to this whole issue. I just want to say a couple of things. When I leave here in 15 weeks, I hope to make some statements. And one of the statements, I truly believe, that the Board of Public Works should be seven members, and there should be seven regions of the city. This trash knows no boundary. But if there's regions of the city that you could hold accountable for, it may be something to work on. That's a statement that I will make, and whether we agree on that, how we budget it is another thing. But if you look at regions and how you deal with trash, it is real key on this issue here. The other thing, too, each of us should have a deputy whose middle name is Trash, because it doesn't get up unless a council deputy makes it happen. In 2008, we had the downturn. In 2008, we had the downturn. I took money that I had, and I believe it was $1,290 money, and I bought a brand-new Ford truck. And I hired a young man who was in Clean and Green. Now, I'm proud to say he's soon to graduate from Long Beach State, and he works on weekends. And I had another guy who needed a job, too. And we go through our district, and we have not met a couch we haven't liked. We pick them up, and we find a home for them, either in the North Central Yard or in the City Yard. But that's a real key aspect. It has to be driven, because, and I love you, Jose, but unless you're the quarterback driving the beauty of the district, it doesn't happen. You need support, because you've been severely downsized. The spot cleaning crews, which used to go all over the city, are all gone. And also, members, I strongly believe, and I love Nazario, and Mr. Salsito, and all the team at Street Services, but street cleaning should be where sanitation is. All the trash should be in the same line, because you're involved with the drains, you're involved with what's picked up on the street, and why not the whole curb? It just makes more sense as we do that. I also want to thank everybody for the situation here. That in 2000, no, not in 2000, 1976, anybody here in 1976? Mr. Parks was across the street, okay? There were 276 trucksters. These were jobs, real good jobs that the city had, and they were the trucksters. I had one, I got the motorcycle Cushman, and I had it for a summer. And it was very important, because they, all these men, and it was men primarily at the time, now we would have a diverse workforce if that was such, they cleaned the streets of Los Angeles all over. That was wiped out the day Proposition 13 passed. So, that kind of special attention. I do want to see a backup, and this is very important, Mr. Sadio, and I thank your attention to this. The planning department should say, okay, Mr. Starbucks, if you want to come in here, you're going to also have to have two trash cans outside your business, right there, that make it easy shot. If you're a restaurant, if you have a liquor license, you have to do it and clean it. And also, I see the mayor's, is the mayor's representative still here? Who's the mayor's representative?
The mayor's representative.
Mayor's representative. Mayor's representative, have the mayor issue an executive order. Every city parcel, we should also be responsible for cleaning the gutter. I go by city facilities, and maybe it looks nice on the top side, but on the gutter where it counts, no one touches it. No one touches it. So, an executive order, and it maybe will take 10 extra minutes to sweep it, but it makes a difference. Because sadly, every bit of trash that we leave on the streets goes into the Los Angeles River. And sadly, every bit of trash that goes to the Los Angeles River goes to Long Beach. And Long Beach deserves better, and so does Charlie and all the tuna in the sea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. You know, one thing, before I call on the next speaker, I lined decorative trash cans on, in the district I represent, on Pico Boulevard and on Washington. And I was amazed, they're full all the time. And so, the question is, where would that trash be if those trash cans weren't there? At this point, we have an arrangement with the Conservation Corps to come and dump these on a weekly basis. So, Enrique, are you saying that maybe you guys could come and dump these for me, and then I could use those resources and have Conservation Corps do something additionally?
Mr. President, actually, Conservation Corps is part and parcel of what we're doing right now. We have them on a contract that supplements our Clean Streets crews. So, chances are that those cans that they're collecting may be an extension of what they're doing for us, but by no means are we saying that we should do the supplement of what the nonprofits are already doing and can do more of.
Oh, no, I understand. I'm teasing you a little bit, but the point I really wanted to make is how amazing it is, the amount of trash that are dumped. I mean, they're affixed to the concrete, they're x yards apart from each other, and I just hate to think of where that trash would be if they weren't there. So, there is merit to what you said, where it relates to, you know, additional trash bins or what have you. The only difference with this is that we did it in a decorative way. And that's something that we may want to look at in other council districts. In fact, Mr. Bonin, I can remember when Bill and I sat next to each other, he was always bugging me as to, you know, people say that Herb's got them, how did you get them? And so, I know that he had a desire, but these, like I said, on one street, they're all blue. On the other street, they're all green. We're looking at doing another major street. We're just waiting to get community sign off on what color they are, and they're dumped weekly. So, I just wanted to have the council members noodle on that, and know that these, they really work.
Mr. President, if I may, on the very note, the efficiency, because all of you are obviously mindful of the cost, as is Miguel, and on your point, and Councilmember Bonin's point, that we can make these cans decorative and attractive, and still bring the efficiency of automated collection, which means for us, it's like a 30-second lift, and we move on. So, in many cases, and in your district in particular, we've been able to accomplish both. Bring in a trash container that is decorative, respectful of the space, on your point, Councilmember Fuentes, and yet, bring the efficiency of automated collection, which means it's a robotic truck that collects it, and we move on to the next one.
Yeah, okay. And that makes sense. And Mr. Labange, we also have a receptacle in our district office, where constituents can bring trash. It's open to them as long as the office is open. And that's something, we get that, do we get that from you, Enrique, that big?
From FA at North Central Yard.
So, we get that. And so, when it's filled up, it's removed, and then we get another one. And the constituents in our district know that whatever they have, they can just bring there. So, with that said, Mr. Fuentes, I interrupted, I jumped in front of you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as promised, I've got another observation that I wanted to share with you. So, as you all are developing the city's cleanliness rating index, I'm wondering if there's any thinking right now to coordinate with the County of Los Angeles and their service planning areas. Because I think that there's some real synergy, or rather, some real opportunity, to try to alleviate some of the sort of health impacts as a result of some of this illegal dumping in areas. And so, if there's a way to sort of incorporate the SPA data, I think that would be really helpful, and brings more utility to the index. The questions that I have for you all, though, those were my statements earlier, are the timing on all of this. I know that we're going to ask, if approved today, ask for a consultant to come on board and help with various elements of it. And I want to obviously credit Mr. Sadio, but Mr. Labange has already begun some of the work, for example, on the street sweeping ideas, and trying to consolidate that service delivery area. And so, there's been motions, conversations had already. How, what is the timeframe? Because I think, with all due respect to collecting more data, we know what the problem is. If you talk to anybody in any community in Los Angeles, you know exactly where the trouble spots are. How soon before we get rip-roaring on all of these sort of great ideas and moving forward? If you could give a sort of a timeframe, assuming that you'll get out of council today with approval?
So, I think it's important that, you know, the mayor's budget comes out in about a month, and there'll be a large discussion about priorities and where, what investments to make. So, our goal is to respond to your direction in light to make some kind of impact as it relates to the budget process. But this is going to be an ongoing process, you know, because obviously, the city is still facing financial challenges, it has to be done in a multi-year phase. But also looking at, not just the general fund, but special funds that could be applicable in this case. And so, we've been sitting with the city attorney, sitting with sanitation, understanding sort of some of the restrictions around particular special funds. And what we hope to respond with is an ability to use some of those funds as a way of funding elements of this program as well.
Well, I'm eager to sort of hear in short order, sort of how, when we can expect to see a significant change in the strategy, and I'm excited about that. The last thing that I would leave you all with is, you know, I particularly like this index as an idea going forward, because I really do think, colleagues, that we have to start changing the way that we think in city government in terms of metrics. It's no longer, in my opinion, street miles paved, trees trimmed, trash collected, miles of sidewalks repaired. It has to be now a function of livability. What is it that sort of measures quality of life? Is it acres green, is it green acres of water reclaimed? Is it water saved? Is it now livability and health index indices? I think those are going to be sort of the new measures for us as we move forward. And again, I just want to applaud you, Mr. Sadio, and my colleagues for your willingness to want to talk trash today. It is, I think, fundamentally, fundamentally, I was waiting for you all to do it, but nobody did it. It's fundamentally, I think, sort of second to public safety, the most important thing that we can do to increase livability in the city of Los Angeles. So, thank you again for your efforts.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Miguel, you may have the answer to this, is that a while back, maybe it's been a couple of years ago, we approved a contract for bus benches, and along with those came the solar-powered potbelly trash, did they ever, is it?
Big belly.
Big belly. Solar trash, have they all implemented those, or is that functioning, or do we know?
I don't know. What do you have? There have been a number of them, and many of you council members have also brought that kind of trash solar-powered compacted container for some of the areas. I don't believe that the full deployment that might have been envisioned under the bench program has been done. I should have that number on my inventory, on the inventory, of how many of the big bellies we have, council member, but I don't have it off.
Because one thing, I was wondering about, we, I think that's some of the stuff that we think something's happening, and we find out later it didn't quite get there. But I'm assuming that most of the benches have been installed, because that was one of the agreements, that they be installed over a certain period of time. But part and parcel was that, was to have the trash bins, and that they picked up the trash. And so, that would be important to find out whether they have fulfilled their contract, because we certainly, I think they have been paid, or we are paying them to do that. And then, the last thing I'll comment on is that, you know, whatever we devise, I think our failures in the city has been our inability to enforce. If we go back and look at the sign ordinance, we look at the news rack, everything falls apart, because we have a great ordinance, but we can't make sure people comply. And so, the more that we can ensure that whatever we propose, that there is voluntary compliance, there are people that are willing, that we're relying on the 80 to 90 percent to do the right thing, and then we enforce against the 10 percent that seems to have a problem doing the right thing. But almost every one of our enforcement programs falls apart, either from lack of resources, budget cuts down the road, or that you can't depend on them over a period of time. So, if we create a program that's going to rely on that, I think it's just a matter of time that it will dissipate.
Got it. Mr. Sadio to close.
Yes, Mr. Fuentes. Who would think I'd be so excited about talking trash? Members, thank you so much. Let me say one thing. Fifteen years in Sacramento, I learned one thing. If you do one thing, and you do it well, that's how you make progress. And for us, I think that's really what this discussion is about. How do we choose one thing that we can all agree upon? Bringing a quality of life to the city, to the Angelenos, to all residents, regardless of socioeconomic background, circumstance.
No applause, please. Go ahead, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you. That's one. One of the important parts that we've seen here and that we've discussed is, we can set up all the ordinances, we can do all those things, but we've got to win the hearts and minds of the Angelenos. They've got to be our partners. I was remiss in not mentioning the LA Conservation Corps, but they've been our partner since the beginning of this. And it's important for us to win the hearts and minds of all Angelenos. How do we do that? Number one, we've got to show that we care. They have to see our initiative. This is part of it. We started here today, that we care. We, the city of Los Angeles, are committed to solving this problem. One of the things, one small point in this, we've got to have the infrastructure. And the fact that we only have 1,000 trash cans, it's like we got more marbles than we have space in the bag. And so, they're going to be someplace else. And so, you can imagine, if we didn't have those cans, where would the trash be? It's amazing that San Francisco, which is 800,000 people, has 3,000 trash cans. New York has 25,000 trash cans. So, we've got to provide the infrastructure. We have plans in our district to quickly move to 100. We have those big ballybusters. We're going to put them on the main corridors. They are decorative. Who brought that up? Who likes the decorative stuff? There you go, I'm with you, Mike. They are decorative. We have a brand, and we want to show the people of our district and the city of Los Angeles that we do care. I think that's the first step in winning those hearts and minds. I want to commend you, Miguel, obviously you, Mark, for an incredible report. Enrique, people here representing the mayor's office, I have found, well, structurally, there's a series of silos that everybody operates in. There's a moment right now where we have incredible sense of collaboration. And I think that's imperative, Mr. President, for us to move forward as a city. That we have to understand that this really is a city initiative, a city vision, in which all of us will ensure that every resident is treated with the dignity and respect of having a clean environment, and that we are committed to making sure that this is the cleanest city of America. Members, I have circulated a motion that begins this project today, and I hope and trust that we all have your support. And with that, I thank you.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, if you could explain, just to make sure it's clear what we'll be voting on.
Absolutely, sir. For item 37, before council, is consideration of motion Sadio Price relative to developing a Clean Streets L.A. strategy, as well as amending motion 37A, that's Sadio Buscagno-Bonin, also requesting a number of report backs related thereto.
So, is it two votes or one?
One vote, sir, as amended.
Okay. So, with that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
No applause. Mr. O'Farrell, item 36.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Colleagues, I have the incredible honor and pleasure of serving the constituents of the great 13th District in the city of Los Angeles. And I have a special privilege of also serving the constituents in a recognized neighborhood called Little Armenia, the only designated such neighborhood in the United States. Little Armenia, a vibrant community of thousands of Armenians, as well as hundreds of Armenian-owned businesses, churches, schools, and cultural centers. The Armenian community in the 13th District plays an incredibly active role in the growth and prosperity of the city of Los Angeles. And the community is woven deeply into the fabric of everyday life across the entire city and beyond. Every year, a march takes place in Little Armenia where thousands... Every year, a march takes place in Little Armenia, where thousands of Armenians and allies from across the Southland gather to commemorate the Armenian genocide committed by Ottoman Turkey in 1915, in which 1.5 million Armenians lost their lives, and another half a million deported from their ancestral homeland of several millennia. This year marks the 100th anniversary of this great crime against humanity. And on April 24th will be this year's march on a much, much larger scale, starting in my district and stretching six miles through Council District Four, West Hollywood, and to the Turkish consulate located in Council District Five. To memorialize this great tragedy, also known as the first genocide of the 20th century, in fact, this crime against humanity termed, coined the term genocide, I propose at the intersection of Hollywood Boulevard and Western Avenue, in the heart of Little Armenia in the 13th District, be named the Armenian Genocide Memorial Square, which is a prime location on the annual march route. This square will be a permanent reminder of the plight and just cause of the Armenian people, and will appropriately recognize the tragedy that befell the grandparents and great-grandparents of many of our constituents. Colleagues, today we have with us representatives of several Armenian-American organizations, including the Armenian Council of America, and also including the Armenian National Committee of America. And we have with us a very special guest, Mr. Valery Makertumian and Mr. Levon Menasian of the Consulate General of the Republic of Armenia. I would now like to ask Valery Makertumian to represent the consulate today and say a few words.
Before, before we go there, I'd like to recognize Mr. Kukorian.
Certainly.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Members, over the course of the next month, you'll be hearing from members of our community and members of this council on a number of occasions as we mark this critically important centennial leading up to April 24th. I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell first for taking the initiative to have a permanent naming of an intersection in recognition of the centennial at the beginning point of the March for Justice, which I hope you'll all be participating in on April 24th. It's, it's an important step to take, to have a permanent marker of this centennial. But it's important to note, too, that this is not in itself a monument to the genocide. There is a monument to the genocide. This is as intersection naming that could have taken place in a number of places. It's appropriate that it's in Little Armenia. But very much equally important, it could have taken place in front of the Turkish consulate at the corner of Wilshire and McCarthy, because it is the Turkish government that continues to deny this genocide. It could have taken place at Witset and Van Owen, the heart of the Armenian community of survivors and their descendants of the Armenian community in the San Fernando Valley. Or we could have placed it at the corner of Wilshire and Granville, where the Azerbaijani consulate now stands, the Azerbaijani government being the greatest threat now to the survival of the Armenian people, and the greatest threat of a potential continuation of the genocidal crimes that began in 1915. So our city unites with Mr. O'Farrell in this effort to name this intersection, and our city will continue, over the course of the next month, to appropriately mark this important centennial anniversary. You'll be hearing more, I'm not going to jump the gun on a number of these things, but one, an additional lasting symbol that I'm going to be asking all of you to approve is the planting of 100 pomegranate trees throughout our city, here in the city hall lawn, and in each of your districts. The pomegranate being the symbol of the Armenian people and of survival. So we'd like to see 100 pomegranate trees planted throughout the city, including in public spaces in each one of your districts. There will be a number of other steps that we're going to be taking, but this is an extraordinary way to start off this centennial year with an appropriate recognition of the genocide and the centennial at an intersection in Little Armenia. And so I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell, I want to welcome the representatives of the consulate and the other Armenian community organizations who are here today to recognize this important day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I wanted to thank you, Mitch, for bringing this forward. I think this is terribly important. More and more, as I talk to young people in my district and throughout the city of Los Angeles, there seems to be a lack of appreciation for the severity of incidences, genocides, issues like this. And I've had to, I think, really try to help people understand how important it is for us to honor the memory of those who perished, and to make certain that atrocities like this never happen again. And I think the only way to do that is to be in the public eye and to be consistently reminding people of the importance for appreciating historic tragedies like this, and so that they never happen again. So I want to thank you, but I also want to thank you, Mr. Kukorian, for your leadership on this. My time in the legislature, yourself and Senator Semidion were tremendous in helping me understand all of the different historical moments in time to make sure that we don't ever forget. And this year in particular, the centennial, I think it's that much more important for us to remind people, all generations. Mr. Corretts recently brought in folks who make sure that we're vigilant against genocide across the world, and he did that a couple of months ago. And I think it's just a constant reminder for us to remember how important this is, and to make sure that those who deny don't ever forget, that we will be vigilant, we will remember, and we will consistently remind them. And so I want to thank you both for your leadership on the issue.
Okay, with that said, if you would please identify yourself and go right ahead.
My name is Valery Makertumian. I am Deputy Consul General of the Republic of Armenia, Los Angeles. Mr. President, honorable city council members, ladies and gentlemen, I'm really honored to be present here on behalf of the Consul General of Armenia, and to welcome all of your attendance. Armenians all over the world, as well as the progressive mankind, will soon together mark centennial commemoration of the Armenian genocide of 1915. History records that Armenians were the first people of the last century to have endured unimaginable cruelties, great massacres, and persecutions that defy comprehension. Over one and a half million Armenians were tortured and brutally killed, displaced and deported by the Ottoman government, with the only aim to annihilate the whole race. The rest of Armenians were taken from their centuries-old homeland, never to return. The Armenian genocide of 1915 is not only a national tragedy of the Armenian people, it's a tragedy for the mankind as well, because it poses serious problems. The flagrant violation of human rights, if timely condemned by the World Powers, would have precluded repetition of the acts of genocide that have since taken place. The enduring legacy of the tragedy also come to define the modern identity of Armenians. We have always been, and are ready today, to side ourselves with the progressive humanity to combat any act of genocide or violence committed against any nation in any corner of the world. Many of the survivors of the 1915 genocide immigrated to the United States, other friendly countries, establishing large Armenian communities. Availing myself on this opportunity, I would like to express the deep gratitude of the Armenian people to the American people, who so kindly extended their generous and continuous support to genocide survivors that started with the rescue of more than 100,000 of Armenian orphans, who survived the nightmare of the 1915 genocide. Today, we are really proud of the valuable contribution of the Armenian-American community to the political, economic, and cultural landscape of the United States of America. It is in this context that the Consul General of the Republic of Armenia, Los Angeles, highly commends the motion presented by L.A. City Council Member Mitch O'Farrell, seconded by Council Members Paul Kukorian, Herb Wesson, Paul Corretts, and Bob Blumenfeld, and many others. Special thanks to you. It's indeed symbolic that the area designated for Armenian Genocide Memorial Square is in Little Armenia, which is the area for tens of thousands of people who get together each and every year to say that they remember the Armenian genocide, who come to express their will, and strong will, to live and to demand restoration of historical justice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. O'Farrell, I also have other cards. If I could call on, and when you come, please state your name, because I will probably not say it correctly. So Theresa Sebak. And I think I have Carly. Identify yourself and welcome.
Good morning, City Councilwoman. Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Theresa Yurimian. I am the Government Affairs Director for the Armenian National Committee of America, Western Region, and I am also the President of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I want to thank Councilman O'Farrell for creating this idea of the square and for going with, for moving forward with this. I live in Little Armenia, and I'm an immigrant to the United States. Since the day we moved to the United States, we've lived in Little Armenia and called it home. It's a treasure. It's a treasure of mine. I'm honored to represent it, I'm honored to live in it, and it's a wonder to be able to see the square be built there, in an area where, since I've been seven years old, we've had this march. As we create the square, I want, I want to highlight the importance of using this as an opportunity to educate our youth and our neighbors about the first genocide of modern times. As, which is the Armenian genocide. As we go through, I see how people still don't know about it, don't know the severity of it, and don't know the repercussions that it has still had, both on the Armenian community and throughout the world, as genocides that followed it. So let's use this as an opportunity to be a teachable moment, to build tolerance both in our neighborhood, tolerance that's much needed both in the area of Hollywood, in our city, in our state, and in our nation. I'd like to thank Councilman O'Farrell, Councilman Kukorian, Councilman LeBange, and Corretts for your involvement in helping organize the March for Justice. Your staff has been integral in helping that process. And on the day of the genocide, on April 24th, I look forward to seeing all of you, both at the opening of the square, and then joining us at the March for Justice, as we march from Little Armenia to the Turkish consulate, demanding justice for this crime against humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have Carly? Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and City Councilmembers. My name is Sebaw Khatidurian. I'm the Chair of the Armenian Council of America, and I'm also part of the Armenian Genocide Centennial Committee, Western United States. As all of you know, between 1915 and 1923, Armenians were subject to torture, starvation, mass murder, and exile from their historical homeland. 1.5 million lost their lives. The Armenian genocide represents a deliberate attempt by the Ottoman Empire and subsequent Turkish Republic to eliminate all traces of Armenians from their historic lands. While the Republic of Turkey inexplicably and adamantly has denied the occurrence of the Armenian genocide, and continues to fully deny the genocide as the centennial is coming up, the Armenian Genocide Memorial Square and other genocide events and commemorations such as this helped Turkish citizens come to terms with historical fact that is the Armenian genocide, and confront their own government. The Armenian Council of America and Armenians throughout the world want to thank Council Member Mitch O'Farrell, Council Member Paul Kukorian, and all of you, and ask you to support the Armenian Genocide Memorial Square. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I'm asking for Carly, I can't make out the last name. If I could have Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman, please come forward, followed by Mr. Spindler.
I live in East Hollywood. It's an armpit. It's an insult to the Armenian community to put it at Hollywood and Western. It's a garbage street. In fact, the Armenian community settled there 25 years ago, when they were leaving Soviet Russia. Almost no Armenians left in Little Armenia. They went to the promised land, Glendale. So if we want to honor Armenians, let's put it, instead of hiding it on Hollywood and Western, where nobody goes, let's put the sign, let's put the square at Hollywood and Highlands, so the whole world can find out about the Armenian genocide. This is an insult to every person. I, my relatives were victims of a genocide, and believe me, the Jewish genocide gets a lot more publicity than the Armenian genocide. Take a look at the garbage and the filth at Hollywood and Western. That's why the Armenians moved out. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Spindler.
You're absolutely right, Mr. John Walsh.
Wait till you get to the mic, and don't, don't shout in the council chamber.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Walsh, that the city of Los Angeles is only doing a pony show here for the Armenians. They don't give a rat's ass about the Armenian population. The same way the people in the streets today are homeless, this is genocide. You're taking advantage of people who have no right, no longer in the community that you're representing and asking to be represented. And the city attorney sits there with his squappy little face, looking at me like if I'm wrong.
He is not talking about this item.
Stay on the subject.
Sir, and the Armenian people should have more dignity in their actual community, as opposed to putting this proposal by Mr. Kukorian, who stepped away, who can't even face the fact that the Jack is wrong.
Stay on the subject.
He's wrong. You're all wrong.
We always are, according to you.
Racism, this division between people. Armenians look like me, dark-skinned and handsome. We don't look like that goat with the gray face who pretends he knows.
Now, come on, watch, watch yourself.
What?
Watch yourself and stay on the subject.
I am on the subject.
Not going to let you sit up here and call people names.
I never said anything offensive or racist like you guys have. Never.
Stay on the subject.
So my point is, when World War II had its population of genocide, the same way the Armenians had their domination of genocide, what about the persons in Los Angeles who are homeless, as you commit the crimes against the people? You haeniest, contemptuous beasts, you, Herb Wesson, you racist.
Thank you, and again, you, I wish you'd show some respect to the Armenian people that are here. Mr. Spindler? And he is disrupting this meeting, Mr. City Attorney. Sergeants, remind him to control himself. Mr. Spindler?
Time and time again, you're forgetting something. What about Turkey? One of our great allies in the Middle East. Every time we ask them to stage our planes on their bases, every time we ask them to fight terrorism, the other hand is always saying, apologize for the Armenian genocide. You can't have it both. There are many people from Turkey that live in this city, live in this county, and constantly they're being blamed for this issue. You never present the other side. Today's Turkish communities and today's Turkey does not represent the horror that happened during the First World War. This happened as a result of the Ottoman Empire. This was not a Turkish attack on Armenians, it was an Ottoman-sponsored attack on the Turkish, on the Armenians. And you never get that right. You keep saying it's Turkey, and every time you go to Europe, the first thing they say is, why do the Americans keep calling us killers? They're not. And you need to sponsor something on the other side. You never talk about the other side. The only thing is Turks, killers, Turks kill Armenians. The Turkish people are great people, peaceful people, and they fight terrorism. And without them, we could not even have a chance to do what we're trying to do in the Middle East. So stop calling this a Turkish-sponsored genocide. It was a World War I. It was a World War I Ottoman genocide, which the empire was dissolved at the end of World War I. Get your historical facts straight, and don't put it over there, put it in Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. No applause. It is disrupting the flow of this meeting. Mr. Akala?
I was not 100% aware that I was gonna talk on this issue, but genocide anywhere in the world is wrong. You took everything from the Mexicans and you call them illegal aliens.
Stay on the subject.
Yeah, the subject is genocide. It doesn't matter where in the world it happens. It happened in the United States. You did all the Indians, all the indigenous people here wrong. And the Turkish, probably, like he said, the Ottoman Empire did wrong to the Armenians. And the Nazis did wrong to the Jewish people, et cetera, et cetera. So what kind of human beings are we? We're a bunch of stupid idiots, ain't we? We just keep dividing each other into separate little races and countries and everything instead of uniting the whole world and saying, "The human race is the only race. Black lives matter." Your cops keep killing black people on the street.
Stay on the-
That is the subject.
No, sir.
It's genocide. It's killing people unjustly, and you keep doing it and doing it with your LAPD, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is that part of the subject?
No, but I'm giving you a pass.
All right. I wanna become mayor in two years.
Now, that's not on the subject. Stick to the subject.
Oh, well-
That's two-way off.
I'm practicing.
Okay, that, again, let me apologize to our guests that are here today. With that said, do you want to close, Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our colleague, Mr. Paul Kokorian, for his, his words, for his incredible ability to provide the full context to all issues related to this very, very important occasion, and Felipe, for your kind words as well. And our consulate general representative had to leave, but I also want to thank Mr. Makartumian, Theresa Savak, everyone who spoke on this very important issue. And of course, I'm gonna ask for an eye vote, and I, I think we'll be in good shape there. But I just want to make sure that, you know, everyone's aware that the morning of April 24th, at the intersection of Hollywood and Western, in the heart of Little Armenia, will be the conscience of the world. But believe me, those assembled can handle the burden, because that's what this march is all about, the centennial. So I look forward to seeing all of you to mark the occasion of the Armenian Genocide Memorial Square and a march to the consulate of Turkey in West Los Angeles, and I look forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you.
Okay, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that's approved. We now move to item 27.
Fourth with, Mr. Chairman.
And that 36, fourth with. Item 27. We have cards on that item. Is Sean Murphy here? Sean Murphy? John Walsh? Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Akala passes. Mr. Herman.
Speaker, I pass.
Okay, so let's, we can prepare to vote on that. All of the speakers passed on, on item 27. Can we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. President, can you go fourth with on that?
Fourth with, per Mr. Labange.
Excellent work on DWP. Thank you.
And on number 40, fourth with as well? Okay, we'll go to item 17. Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding the amendment has been submitted and public comment has already been satisfied?
Yes, that's amended motion 17A.
Okay, Mr. Labange.
It's been a long desire of mine to expand Griffith Park as far as I can, but in the time that I'm able to serve, not all will be made done. But this is an opportunity. I ask Charlie, Charlie, would you come up here and introduce yourself in the planning department, just the next steps? There will be a tremendous amount of public hearings, the opportunity for the next council person to hopefully push this through. Charlie, give us the one-minute overview.
Hi, Charlie Roush of the Los Angeles City Planning Department. This is a series of properties along the ridge line to the east side of the Coinga Pass. It overlooks Hollywood Boulevard, I mean, the Hollywood Lake. It contains a roadway which connects with the extensive road system around Lake Hollywood and provides a route to it from the area around Barham Boulevard.
Just east of that, but it's really more south. It's next to the Hollywood Freeway. But anyway, there'll be a lot of public hearings and public comment if this is to be approved one day in the future.
That's right. This is a motion to start the system, start the program. It's basically an exchange of properties. A portion of it will remain open space, and another portion would be amended to allow R3 density adjacent to another R3 density condominium project.
Adjacent to the freeway.
adjacent to the freeway and another project.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we're gonna hold on 18. We'll go quickly to 15. Nick Colishit, Colishit, Mr. Spindler, and Akala. Please, come on, Nick. Nick, where are you? Nick, come on. Item 15.
Because I, I support this.
That's fine.
And I'm the owner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, if I could get Mr. Spindler and Akala. They have one minute, or Mr. Spindler has one minute? Okay.
No on the item. No, because it costs money for homeowners, and we're vacating the portion, but of all the things I see here, which, believe me, nobody understands what this is, the gentleman with the suit says he supports it, so that's pretty much a done deal. But like most of the votes here, they're very close. It, it turns on one vote. So I urge-
Stay on the item.
Yeah, I urge one of you, just for fun, to actually push the button. There's a button, and you push it like that, and it votes no. Just click it and see if it works, because I don't think any of those buttons work anymore. I think they're all-
You're not on the subject. You're not on the subject.
Well, yes, I am.
No, you're not. Your time, thank you, Mr. Akala. Mr. Akala, no, your time is done. Mr. Akala, come forward. Please stay, telling you in advance, stay on the subject.
The subject is, there's no more agendas over there, so it's kinda hard to follow the meeting.
Then why would you sign up to speak on it? So you have to know what the subject is. Go ahead, speak on the subject.
All right. Consideration of protest, categorical exemptions, and public works, and gang reduction committee report relative to the vacation, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we need gangs of people in the city cleaning up the streets. You can call them gangs.
That is, stay on the subject.
Yeah, yeah. This has to do with gang reduction, but you should actually implement gang technology and get gangs of people cleaning up the streets.
Stay, stay on the, the subject.
Isn't it gangs?
No, stay, stay on the subject.
I thought it had to do with gangs. Categorical exception and, and reduction committee report relative to the vacation of the no-worthy portion of the Lockout Mountain Avenue from, what? Oakside Way to 12224 First Westerly. That guy's right. Nobody can understand this junk.
No applause. Let us vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Fuentes.
If we could move item 35, 35, fourth with?
No problem. Item 35, fourth with. 15 as well. Mr. Parks, we're moving to item 18.
I would call this special because there's some uniqueness in the system, that this went before the East Side Planning Commission, and there was no consensus, so the community's appeal was not acted upon. It appears that the main issue of this appeal was that during the initial mitigated negative declaration, there was agreement that there'd be approval or acceptance of a rooftop transmitter. During the process, this transmitter was moved to an at-grade site in front of residences, and so therefore, there was no second mitigated negative declaration. So I'm asking that we grant the appeal so that this can be properly reviewed in the future. We have a committee report as a communication, because it was no quorum, and so I think it would be in the best interest of our community to allow them to come in and appeal this or have their appeal accepted so that it's gonna be reviewed appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this.
Mr. President, pardon me, that would require a second from another member.
I second it. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. No applause. We're gonna move to the next item, which is item four, called special by cards. We have Mr. Sean Murphy. Do we have Anthony White? Okay, so on item four, Sean, Anthony White, Mr. Akala.
I'm calling item four, fourth with.
Mr. Herman, item four. Okay, now we can vote on this. All of the public speakers have spoken. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and folks, I need you to quickly vote on reconsideration for item 18. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you.
On item, what?
18.
18? I pass. I was not aware.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Hernandez, I'm sure you pass as well. So why don't we prepare to vote on this? Let's again, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, that again is, is to grant the appeal.
Okay.
And can, there's been a request to send that matter forth with, sir.
No, without objection, that'd be the order. Now, we're at item one. Let me ask for Sean Murphy. Mr. Akala on item one? Or is he out of time? Mr. Akala has one, you have one moment? One minute, not moment, one minute.
Well, one moment can be as long as one minute.
Yes, it can.
Yeah, yes, it can. Yeah, this has to do with housing, which is right down my alley. Item one, hearing protest relative to the Office of Financial Reports requesting approval to record the liens against taxpayers and pay bills. I disapprove of this item because anytime you put a heavier load on the people that finally have the money to buy a home, you invent all kinds of excuses to take that home away from them. So you are a homeless-making institution, basically. I don't know who the hell created a government dedicated to driving people homeless. It is ridiculous. I don't think that was the intention of the Constitution to drive everybody homeless.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, I believe you have one minute. Mr. Herman, you have one minute as well.
John Walsh at Hollywood Dems, J. Walsh Confidential. This is a very important, this is, again, the previous speaker, the Honorable Dahlhouse dude pointed out that this is a recording of liens. He was wrong about, this isn't a recording of unpaid taxes for somebody who owns a home. This is for something called the FNT. That's misspelled, isn't it? Where's the UCK? FNT Produce Company, and the lien is for $3,611.42. I think, since I don't see the produce company and I don't see any fruits around here, I would, I would guess that the FNT Produce Company is gonna pay you the $3,611 in, and recordedly, in unpaid taxes.
Wayne Spindler? Oh, wait, Mr. Spindler is out of time? Okay, Mr. Herman? And Mr. Herman has a moment, right? One minute, I mean. Okay. No, your time is, Mr. Herman? Mr., Mr. Herman?
Now, we're talking in regards to the FNT Produce Company for the lien of $3,611.42 chump change that some unpolite politician has assessed these taxes on. I am calling for a motion today to postpone these charges of the taxes, but although there will be a tabulate of all yeses by the yes, yes, yes men, we will find no order by the contemptuous, scornful, disgusting action of this process of a lien. I demand a letter of receipt to be proven before you take any action against this company, and I am protesting on behalf of the company who's not here for the lien, for- And I am protesting on behalf of the company who's not here for the lien for Code Section 21.15P for the following. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
Okay, general public comment. Sean, Bill Huey, Luis E., Jose Martinez, please come forward. Bill, come on. Do we have Luis? Mr. Martinez, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Council President Weston, members of the L.A. City Council. I have a magazine here that has a 100,000 circulation. It's called The Apartment Owners Magazine. And on the cover story, we have a video of a L.A. Housing Inspector breaking into a tenant's apartment when a tenant's not home. This is, this is because there's a landlord who sued the Housing Department and he won in court and the courts told him, "Stop harassing George Penaus." And the Housing Department was so angry that they lost, they went back to court, they got another judge to give them a warrant, and they broke into every apartment in this building. This is outrageous. These tenants want to sue. I mean, can you imagine? You're coming from work, you find your apartment door's been broken, and it's not a burglar, it's the L.A. Housing Department. The contention of Rushmore Cervantes is that one warrant gives them the authority to break into every unit in the building. We got a lawsuit going on this, and I think the federal court's gonna see otherwise. Please get that Housing Department. We've got criminals in there. Get them out of there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Louis, or Luis?
Hi, members of the City Council, I'm Louis Eisenstein. Um, I just wanna ask for a resolution, if you may, to congratulate Benjamin Netanyahu over his victory over Barack Obama. I think that was an important step in fighting terrorism and that, um, you know, when Obama comes to the city, he abuses us. I mean, he causes traffic, he's a bully. So, you know, once he's out of power, I, I feel the city will improve in traffic-wise. Um, I also want to talk about Bill Huey's Fair Housing Coalition. Uh, we have on video, and we uploaded on YouTube, we have 6,000 views so far. We don't even have any advertisements. And people are outraged seeing inspectors come into people's units with a lockpicker and opening up the units while the tenants are inside taking showers. And they have signs on their doors saying, "We do not want any, want any inspectors in." And tenants are, are on our side now, and this is gonna be a huge civil rights issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martinez, Jose, Anthony White, Daryl Gale, please come forward, followed by Richard Robinson, and a Sean Lee.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Daryl Gale, environmental advocate. Are any of you thinking about getting a new car? Do you know that you can lease a Nissan Leaf for only $199 a month? And the state of California, under the Clean Vehicle Rebate Project, CVRP, offers rebates of up to $2,500. This will cover your down payment. And, so you could see the CVRP website, if you need a charging station, go to the LADWP website. We can all do our part for cleaner air in Los Angeles, and we can all work towards energy independence. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've got Richard Robinson, Sean Lee, and Brian Barajas. I thought I saw Brian. So make your way down. Richard, hello.
Mr. President, members, when Mayor Garcetti was elected, he placed his hand on the Bible and he swore to protect the city of Los Angeles. Today, he's being accused of being a no... I have to blame the Los Angeles Times and its schizophrenic editorial page, but, uh, that's another story. We've been through that for years. Mayor Garcetti learned where the paperclips are. He didn't come here to reinvent the wheel. He wants to perfect this, the largest city's political system. So I'd appreciate it personally if those who have intelligence in the city of Los Angeles were not just ambulance stations, well, get off the mayor and let him perfect the city's government. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Lee, please come forward. Brian Barajas, you'll be after, uh, him, and I think it's a Lucas Robert or Robert Lucas. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Sean Lee. As a, uh, home-sharing host, I'd like to address how benefit we get from local businesses and community in the great Los Angeles area. Most of my guests are from all over the world, were short-term, um, international students. Because of the short term, they can, uh, able to stay at my place and go to school. I see a lot of, um, local businesses, I get benefit from it, go to shopping. And for myself, I get also benefit as a struggling fine artist. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bur- wait, who do I have next? I don't see Brian. Okay, there you are. Okay.
I guess I popped off from the ground or something. Anyways, um, I turned in, um, a leaflet from LaRouche PAC. Uh, it's called "On the Subject of Germany's Row" by Lyndon LaRouche. It's not, well, I mean, you would call it some good news to this Glass-Steagall to separate the bank situation with Martin O'Malley coming out as, uh, you know, his presidential bid for 2016, but we, uh, you know, his comments are right. We need a president who can, uh, bring back the Glass-Steagall Act. Uh, obviously, Obama's not one of those characters or a Jeb Bush or Hillary Clinton. Um, but I think the emphasis here is to bring back the educational system under the federal Constitution of the founding fathers, which some people might have heard of Johannes Kepler. But we need a strong education system, and I think something with, with this, you should read it.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas or Mr. Robert, followed by, is there Candace Graham? Candace Graham, please come forward, followed by Mr. Walsh. Yes, sir.
You know, it's been a while since I've been here, Mr. Weezer. Congratulations. Uh, you know, you're still, uh, very positive and interactive for me.
No applause.
Uh, also, uh, this, uh, marathon, it was, uh, one of the most remarkable experiences that I've witnessed, uh, with the impact it had on the city. I've seen spirits lifted, uh, just unbelievably with some of the most downtrodden, uh, desperate people, uh, in my life. Also, yesterday at the county supervisor meeting, I seen something that I've never experienced in my life by a politician. Sheila Kuehl, on this Pay for Success Initiative from the federal government, ponied up $8 million of her own money to take the risk out of this initiative. I about fell out of my seat. Uh, it's on condition that once the risk is solved, the county will pay them back. This was phenomenal. Pay for Success.
Thank you. So do I have Candace Graham, Ms. Graham? Okay, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman?
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. L.A. Times now costs $2. Don't buy it. Buy a big bite and a big gulp, it'll cost you $2. It's down to 40 pages, 40 pages. It's five cents a page, and it's all racist. And Carolyn Ramsey will definitely be running, uh, for Labonge's seat, uh, against either David Ruh or Mr. O'Grady. Vote for anybody but Carolyn Ramsey. And, uh, I don't know if you saw her, she was wearing very, very tight pants. Andrea Alarcon, former head of the Planning Commission, where she was paid $80,000, was peddling herself here. Now, remember what her story was. Uh, she got a job, she got screwed on the table right out here in Naviragosa's office. While she was getting screwed, her five-year-old daughter disappeared. They finally found her five-year-old daughter wandering around down in the garage. And by the time they found her, this woman, Andrea Alarcon, was, uh, getting drunk in Koreatown.
Thank you. Thank you. And to those of you, so those of you that, no, you're disrupting the meeting. And for those of you that are listening or watching, what he said is based on absolutely no facts at all. Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
I heard there's a storm coming in, and it's starting to rain. Is it starting to rain yet?
(singing) Blame it on the rain. Have you ever seen a crooked politician?
Now, we, you gotta keep it down. Keep it down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Keep it down, Mr. Herman. I don't want my equipment broken by you shouting into it.
(speaking Spanish)
Your time is done, okay? You've been warned, your time is done. Wayne, sergeants, he needs to, uh, go have a glass of water or something. Come on, Mr. Akala. No, you're gonna play by the rules or not play. Now, Mr. Spindler and then Mr. Akala. Now, he's still disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, I think he should be shown the hallway.
Okay, so we have freedom of speech until we do something you don't like?
Stop for one second. Hold his time, Mr. City Attorney. No, stay there.
For the, for the record, Mr. Herman is still disrupting the meeting as he's being let out.
Okay, so give, uh, Mr. Akala back his full minute. Go ahead.
I am beginning to understand the whole system. Everything is cool. You have freedom of speech until we hear something we don't like. Until, until you use a tone of voice we don't like.
If you start squealing, you're disrupting the meeting. There are people that talk like that. How come you don't throw them out every time they speak?
Please keep your voice down. No yelling and screaming.
I'm not yelling.
You know that.
This is my natural voice.
No, then just keep, that, just keep going then. You and I don't have a issue.
Let me get off the mic a little bit, 'cause I do have a loud voice and I intend to use it. You're a bunch of idiots. You're a bunch of bullshitters. You're a bunch of crooked politicians. And you work under the table. You're a bunch of assholes.
Mr. Spindler?
Throwing out speakers, limiting people to one minute. For those that are hearing impaired, there's just two things that you can say about this city council. That's what you can say about this city council. Because they don't care. They're here to make deals. They're here to raise money for the next campaign. That's why you don't get two minutes anymore. You get one minute. Somebody wants to sing a parody? It's constitutionally protected, it's, it's protected by the Brown Act, but your city attorney here will not defend the city charter, the California Constitution, and the United States Constitution, of which not only he took the oath, but every member of this body took the oath. That's called treason. And the city is going to result in something called bankruptcy over it. It'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment. Announcements? Uh, now would everybody please rise? Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you, members. I ask we adjourn in memory of Don Gubler, the father of our Leon Gubler, the head of the Chamber of Commerce. Don Gubler lived to be 97 years old. Wonderful man, his wife, Aura, married 69 years, seven children, and, uh, 29 grandchildren, 37 great-grandchildren. We remember that very special father, Darwin Gubler. Also, members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Fred Otto, who's 89 years old. He was a principal architect and engineer for the ten-light structures of the 1972 Olympic Games in Munich and was awarded the 2015 Pritzker Award for a high honor in architecture. He grew up in Berlin, our sister city, and he survived by his wife Ingrid. He lived to be 89. This is a sad one. Russ Joyner, who some of you may know, was the principal person in charge of getting the crucial project at Hollywood Highland built. Uh, he was survived by his wife Brenda. He died in his 50s here. He was much loved and a much great leader. Russ Joyner. And finally, this is tragic, John, John Gerberg, who was 46 years old, was killed in a car accident while his car stalled in the Highway 15, I believe, on the San Marcos, California area. He was born in Laos, grew up here in Los Angeles. His son went to Loyola High School. Uh, his, uh, great, his grandmother, Elizabeth O'Connor, uh, lives in the Silver Lake District, and he survived by his Lisa O'Connor, the grandmother, but Elizabeth is his wife and their son, Maximilian, at Loyola, 18, and Benjamin, four. And I was on that street, and Benjamin was sleeping in his car, and the grandmother needed help lifting him out of the car. This is a couple of weeks ago. And I lifted him up and put him in the couch, so he looked so good, the young boy. But tragedy hit his family with his dad passing in the accident. Every day's a blessing, every day, every moment. John Gerberg, we rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Kokorian, did you?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, on February 28th, North Hollywood lost one of its longtime residents and someone who gave much of herself to our senior community when Judy Higby Siegel, uh, passed away due to complications that she, uh, endured from a stroke that she had suffered earlier. Uh, Judy was, uh, the daughter of a member of the United States Navy. Uh, her father was serving in, uh, part of the Allied invasion of Anzio Beach on the day she was born, uh, in June of 1943. And when he came back, um, he moved the family to North Hollywood, um, to Iowa and then, uh, eventually to North Hollywood. Um, in 1962, Judy married Jim Higby, uh, and their only son, Michael, was born in 1964. Um, Judy worked for many employers in the North Hollywood area, um, but then eventually she found her real calling in the work that she did as a volunteer, uh, at the East Valley Senior Center. Um, she started there and was later hired as a volunteer and was later hired as an office manager and stayed there for 15 years. In addition to running the day-to-day operations of, of the senior center, Judy, uh, worked with many local senior citizens to connect them to the services that they need that are provided in so many of our senior citizens, such important services, peer counseling, the Thanksgiving food delivery, uh, the women's rap group, women's chorus, and citizenship and immigration counseling. Um, and she did all of those things to help so many people in their, in the golden years of, of their lives. Uh, in 2004, Judy had an injury, um, that forced her retire, to retire from the center, but, um, uh, she continued to be a, uh, a member of the North Hollywood community who meant so much to, to so many people. In addition to her son, Michael, uh, who now lives in Sunland, uh, Judy leaves her mother, Beatrice May of Baytown, Texas, her sister, Donna Jean Nicholas of Baytown, Texas, and many nieces, nephews, and other family members, and, and many friends and community members who were helped by her. Uh, her funeral service will be held on Saturday, March 21st, uh, and I ask that we adjourn in her memory. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd ask we adjourn in memory of Albert Williams, who passed away on Wednesday, March the 11th. Albert was a longtime city employee. He was one of the pioneers in development of the city and LAPD's Emergency Preparedness Response Vehicles. Also, he and his wife, Catherine, were longtime, uh, decade-old supporters of Southwest Community Police Station, uh, for decades. Uh, his viewing will be held on March 20th, between 4:00 and 7:00, at Angeles Funeral Home on Crenshaw. Uh, the memorial service will be Saturday, March 21st, at 10:00 a.m. at Angeles Funeral Home, 3875 South Crenshaw. Following the memorial service, the interment will be at Rose Hill Memorial Park on Workman Mill Road in Whittier. Reception following the interment will be at the African-American Firefighter Museum at 1401 South Central. The family asked in lieu of flowers to send donations to Challengers Boys and Girls Club on Vermont and the African-American, uh, Firefighter Museum on Central Avenue. Both of these were his long-term causes.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm looking to the left side. Any adjournings on my, my left? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.